Good evening.
Good evening. I call to order the special meeting of the Lakewood City Council on October 7, 2024 at 7:02 PM. To connect with the council meeting, please use one of the following links to connect with us online, lakewood speaks.org or lakewood.org/councilvideos. For online public comments for topics that we are discussing this evening, you may post those comments of any links on lakewood speaks.org as well. That is our online forum for public comments. We will be leaving that open through this evening and until 10:00 AM tomorrow morning. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Strom.
Here.
Over.
Here.
Mayor Carrera is absent. Stewart.
Here.
Mayor Carrera.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Sharazai.
Here.
LeBure.
Here.
Nystrom.
Here.
Lo.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Counselor Sinks is absent. Mayor Strom, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. And for those who are able to stand at this point, I would ask you to do so to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Afterwards, we'll remain standing for a moment of silent prayer.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All of the members of city council have the responsibility to comply with the terms of Charter 7.2 Prince B and excuse themselves from voting on any matter in which they determine they have a personal, financial, or business interest. The city council is empowered by Charter 7.2 Prince B to agree by unanimous vote excluding the member at issue to excuse any member of the council from voting on a matter in which they determine such member has a personal or has a personal financial or business interest. Interest. Before I hand over the floor to the city clerk to ask him to read our first topic into the agenda this evening, I have a couple of comments that I wanted to share with everybody. For those of you that are here, the ever exciting topic that occurs every year this time, and it's the conversation about money. So, very excited to start to get to the culmination of a lot of conversations that have been going on this year, from staff to counselors and community members that have been voicing your thoughts and questions about these topics. We appreciate all of you being engaged and involved with this very big endeavor. For this evening, the way that we will move through tonight is we'll first be discussing the ordinance that entails the actual budget. The process for this is different than what you're used to when we're voting on an ordinance. Typically, you'll see that the first reading does not accompany a public comment period with the budget that is different. So even though this is our first reading, we will have a public hearing on the budget this evening. So stay tuned for that in a few. And wanted to mention a slight adjustment that we have to running the meeting this evening. For those of you that may have been tuning in throughout the year, one of the things that we have been working on is to operate in a very efficient manner so that we're up there in the limited time that we have able to do as much business for the city as you can fit within that. Part of that included an update to our policies and procedures earlier this year, and that included adopting what we call Bob's Rules of Order, which is a parliamentary procedure process that is designed for municipal government. One of the items entailed within that is that we have all agreed to five minutes of speaking time. So, five minutes of speaking time at a time. And what that means is that we have 11 people up here. So for each topic item, and if we go around one time, we have 55 minutes of discussion if everyone sticks to the five minutes and we only have one round, which isn't always typical. So, we've had some, I don't know, we've gone through, we've been working on getting that ironed out or nailed down, that would be it, nailed down this year. And we have a new way of trying to help all of us adhere to our five-minute rule. And Counselor Cruz tonight has agreed to be our starter with this. What you will hear, what you will see occurring throughout this evening's meeting is we have, will you hold up your fabulous blue timer? We have a fabulous blue timer that is timed at five minutes. And Counselor Cruz has offered to be our timekeeper this evening. So she will gently let us know when we hit over that five minutes. And I want to say to council, this is only per round. So, we have, if we have 12 questions, we can come back after the first round, but we want to make sure everybody has the opportunity to talk for their five minutes in the first round, especially again, back to the importance of the topic we are here for this evening, and that is the spending on the operations of the city. So with that, I will go ahead and ask the clerk, Mr. Rob, if you'll go ahead and read item number five into the record.
Item five, first reading and public hearing on ordinance O-2024-27, adopting a revised budget for the year 2024 for the city of Lakewood, Colorado, and further adopting the annual budget for the city for the fiscal year beginning on the first day of January 2025 and ending on December 31, 2025, as well as setting the mill levy for the year 2025, estimating the amount of money necessary to be raised by levying taxes for the year 2024 to defray the costs of municipal government of the city of Lakewood, Colorado for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2025, and ending December 31, 2025, and estimating the amount of money to be derived from other revenue sources, setting forth the appropriations for each fund.
Thank you, Mr. Rob. And we do have a presentation this evening. For those that have not seen a presentation yet, we did have a more elongated presentation a couple, shoot, I don't remember the date, two or three weeks ago. So if you want to dive into a little bit more information, that presentation is available on YouTube Lakewood's Lakewood Colorado's channel and/or on Lakewood Speaks. We also have a number of documents that are included on Lakewood Speaks so that anybody tuning into this conversation this evening can see a staff memo, the budget, as well as a litany of questions that have been coming in from city council to staff over the last, wow, it's been just a little bit over a month that we've been asking for questions. So lots of information for anybody that wants to dive in a little bit more than the conversation that you'll hear this evening. So with that, we'll go ahead and I will hand the floor over to Holly Bjorklund, our CFO.
Good evening. As Mayor Strom had mentioned, this is really going to be highlights this time, not the detailed presentation of the budget. And the one from September 16th is the one that has the real detail, if you want to see that presentation. So this council session is the third meeting that we've had on the budget and, or will be the third. And the final one will be on October 21st, which is the second reading and public hearing. So what we're going to be covering is the proposed 2025 revised and 2020, sorry, revised 24 and 2025 budget, the general capital and Tabor fund, and specific areas of interest. So the city of Lakewood has 17 different funds, and they are grouped into five different categories. The largest one is the general fund, which can be used for any purpose at all. And then we have the capital project funds, which can be used for acquisitions, for construction, and for maintenance. And we have two of those, which is the capital improvement and the equipment replacement fund. And we have enterprise funds is the next grouping, which is for government-owned businesses that do not receive more than 10% of funding from state or from local government. And then we have four of those, the golf course, and then three utilities, which is sewer, stormwater, and water. Then we have the special revenue funds, which is for a specific purpose. And we have six of those, which is conservation trust, economic development, heritage, culture and arts, open space, grants, and Tabor. Then finally, we have our internal service funds, which is expenses for across multiple departments. And that's for four different funds, which is medical, dental, property and casualty, retirement retirees' health program, and workers' compensation. Some additional background for you. So for all revenue, these are the different categories for revenue that we have across the whole city. And the large one is the taxes, which is 60%, which includes sales, property, and use taxes. The second largest is charges for services, which is at 22%, inner governmental revenue at 13%, investment income 3%, license and permits 2%, other revenue at 1%, or fines, forfeitures, and all other revenue at 1%. So this slide shows you the expenses by department. So you can see the largest is public works at 30%, but the majority of that is materials and purchasing of things versus people. And then we have police at 22%, which is primarily people. Then we have non-departmental at 10%, municipal courts at 2%, finance at 6%, community resources 15%, other departments is at 6%, and operational services, you can't actually see it, but it's at 9%. We'll fix that. For property taxes, there is a $600,000 example here, which is giving you the distribution between the different entities that receive property tax. You can see that the city of Lakewood gets 5%. And in this example, the individual would be paying $4,373 for their property tax, and the city would get $224 of that. So as was mentioned in the study session, the proposed book did not have the actuals, finalized actuals that were audited. We had unaudited actuals. That is unusual for the proposed book. And the reason for that is this is an unusual year. We did change our financial system. So we had to do an audit of the old system and the new system, which added two months to our process for doing the audit. But now we do have our final numbers. And the annual comprehensive financial report is on the website, and that was put on on October 1. So the difference in what you'll see in the actuals in the adopted budget compared to the proposed is a decrease of 400,000 in revenue, an increase of 200,000 expense, and a decrease of end-of-year fund balance for the general fund by 600,000. This is not a material amount for an audit. However, I wanted you to be aware of why there's a change in the actuals. So this is the changes for the 2024 revised budget. And the total revenue is projected to be 200,000 and higher, and expenses 16.3 million higher from the original 2024 budget. As we covered in the study session, the primary changes for revenue changes are a decrease in specific revenue areas based on the trending that we're seeing in 2024, and an increase in investment income. For expense, the changes are primary carryforward projects that were not completed in 2023. So this is not additional expense, and we're not adding $16 million. It's really just a shifting it from 2023 to 2024. The areas that there's actually an increase is the cost of insurance has gone up by 2.2 million, and that's our estimate. But that's partially offset by an increase in vacancy savings. There are two administrative changes to be made to the proposed budget, to, from the proposed budget to the adopted budget. These are two grants that were both approved previously by city council, which is why this is an administrative change. And these two grants were in 2024, sorry, for 2024, we have $9.3 million for Department of Local Affairs, DOLA, which is a grant for the Navigation Center, which you all are very familiar with. We also had $3.1 million in there for Department of Energy, but we've revised it up to 5 million because that now has been actually allocated or awarded to the city. So original estimate was 3.1, and now it's 5. The 2023 budget mill levy was set at the full mill of 4.711. In 2024, the budget was reduced to 4.28. And since the 2024 reduction was a one-year temporary reduction, in 2025 budget, it is returned back to the 4.711 mills. The 2023, oh, sorry, in the last several years, sales tax has fluctuated more than the usual due to inflation. This slide is showing you what happened with the real growth of sales tax. Real growth means taking out inflation factors and seeing if the sales tax revenue is actually increasing or decreasing. For 2023, we saw sales tax increase by 1% due to continued recovery from the pandemic and due to growth in online sales. This is a very moderate or minimal amount of growth, having a 1%. For 2024, we're experiencing sales tax, real growth is softening and flattening. So we are expecting it to be only 0.1%, which is basically flat. For 2025, we don't know if there's going to be a recession, but we are forecasting with the best information we have now that it'll be a 1% growth. So this is a word of caution for continuing to increase spending expenditures because you don't really know what's going to happen with the economy. Having said that, there are several proposed staffing changes to support core services and city council initiatives. These are the staffing changes for the proposed budget, five new positions for 2024, and seven new positions for 2025. For 2024, we have one community development block grant coordinator, one HR system analyst, two city attorneys, one court martial. And then for 2025, two sustainability planners, one variable staff moved to part-time, one economic resiliency position, two parks maintenance workers, and one paralegal. As part of the annual budget process, a plan is also developed for the next five years. To create this plan, again, we need to evaluate revenue. Only modest growth is expected in future years. Additionally, expense reprioritization will need to be made if Tabor returns, the Tabor limit returns in 2026. As discussed in prior years, there's a significant investment that is needed to put into the city's infrastructure. Strategically, the city has been saving in the general fund and the capital fund for these investments and community support. In 2024 revised and 2025 proposed budget, some of these investments have been proposed to begin or continue, which are in alignment with the infrastructure needs as well as the city council goals. A few examples of these are Colfax Safety Project, Maintenance Campus, bike lanes, Whitlock Solar, and multi-pronged solutions for adding the concerns of unhoused, for addressing the concerns of unhoused and affordable housing. Investments in these areas are proposed to continue for the next five years. These next two slides give some examples of how this proposed budget is tying back to the city goals. For trust and accountability, the city focused on transparency and community engagement and feedback. So two examples of that are the GIS story map for development projects. Imagine Tomorrow Arts, Parks, and Recreation for All. In affordable housing, the two examples are Contribution to Colorado Gives, Bring It Home Fund, and expediting the 90-day review process for affordable developments. And for homelessness, we have CAT, navigators, coresponders, and cold weather sheltering, as well as navigation center purchase. For public safety, transportation, and infrastructure, we have the North Drive Gulch and West Colfax Safety Project and Real-Time Crime Center. Then for sustainability, we have enhanced development menu, sustainable develop, and sustainable development standards. The whole, and then also the whole government approach of 34 dedicated staff with 100-plus staff supporting sustainability projects. And finally, we have thriving economy. We're exploring a new urban renewal area, the Sheridan Corridor, and outreach workshops and partnerships with women and minority-owned businesses. So this bar chart reflects the strategic savings in the general fund and the depletion of the fund over time, as there is investment in infrastructure and city council goals. So you can see in 2023, it's a very healthy balance, and then it gets drawn down over time. You see that same trend happening in the capital improvement fund as the general fund. So now we'll move into Tabor. This is the Tabor calculation, which is CPI or inflation plus a local growth, which is new construction. And you add those together, and you get the allowable growth, which is the Tabor limit. allowable growth, which is the Tabor limit. Tabor requires two limit calculations, overall revenues and property tax. This slide shows what was historically refunded and what was transferred to the Tabor fund. The refunded Tabor dollars are the striped bars, and the retained Tabor dollars are the green bars. The 2023 transfer to the Tabor fund is $13.9 million. This transfer is $3.3 million higher than the 2022 actuals for various reasons, but one of the major drivers is a $2.6 million shift in the unrealized value of the city's investments. Typically booked at a given point in time, unrealized gains or losses of city investments is factored into the Tabor revenue growth calculation. But there is no actual gain or loss to revenue itself, as the assets have not been sold. Since this $2.6 million is unrealized value of city investment, it is not revenue the city has received. We have indicated this separately in the 2023 column with the green stripes at the top. Without this included, the 2023 Tabor calculation is $11.3 million. The Tabor transfer estimate for out-years is based on a rolling six-year average, and for 2024, the estimated Tabor transfer is $8.3 million. So you will see on the next six slides, the Tabor funds are being used for a significant number of projects in various stages of completion. This slide shows the list of parkland acquisitions using Tabor dollars. This was actually a question that someone, one of the council members, had on what are the acquisitions we had. This is not the complete list, but this is the ones that use Tabor funds. There is a wide variety of projects under design and development for open space. You can see that on this list. These are the completed projects for infrastructure, transportation. The main focus is the sidewalk maintenance and improvement programs and traffic signals. Once these funds are used up, the maintenance of these new sidewalks and traffic signals will need to have alternative These are the projects that are actively under construction or are shovel-ready, with construction beginning in the near future. These are the future projects for infrastructure and transportation that begins the design and development stage. These are the completed and continuous programs for the police department. There are also two projects that are proposed to be added to the budget, which are the Real-Time Crime Center and the Exxon Writing. So now we'll move on to the specific areas of interest during the budget process. There have been some subjects that have had more discussion. The next several slides will be a summary of the work that is being done in these areas. So the Separated Bike Lanes program started in 2024. There was $900,000 that was forecasted for 2024, and we're expecting 570 to actually be spent in 2024. This covers six lane miles of separated bike lanes, which the cost of that construction was $330,000. There's $187,000 in bike lane, a bike lane sweeper and snowplow. And then the additional $50,000 spending for 2024 is at the Garrison-Alameda Intersection Design. Then for 2025, the plan is to add $100,000 and carry forward $330,000, which would be a total of $430,000. So the two items that would be spent during 2025 would be Garrison-Alameda Intersection Construction, and then Separated Bike Lanes on a section of Pierce and First Ave. There are three integral parts of the success of this program, which are utilizing the updated bicycle plan, which is expected to be finalized in 2025, integrating with the Streets Resurfacing Program, and learning from experiences and evaluation in Lakewood and other cities. The team will know a lot more in the next year when Lakewood is developing the 2025 revised and 2026 budget. This shows you a map of where the bike lanes are for 2024 and what will be constructed So sidewalks was also another topic that was regularly talked about. So we thought we'd give some background on what does that cover. And over the last five years, oh, sorry, from 2019 through 2023, that's four years. So over the last four years, there's been over $5 million spent on 2.5 miles of new sidewalks and shared use paths. And in 2024, we have $9.6 million in the revised budget and 1.2 million spent year-to-date. And in the 2025 proposed budget, there's $6.8 million proposed. And then of the Colfax Safety Project, which is a total of $29.2 million, there is a redesign of three miles of sidewalks that will be done in 2026. For sustainability, positions and functions have been expanding rapidly in the city over the past few years, and staff is focused on local initiatives and partnering on the regional level and the state level. You can see the staffing support and the key services on this slide. For staffing support, we have 34 dedicated staff with 100-plus staffing supporting sustainability projects. And the key services are climate action and resilience, energy, water, and built environment, zero-waste, sustainable transportation, tree preservation and tree canopy, sustainable development, and sustainable neighborhoods. For the homeless support, two years ago, the city did not have any staff for attainable housing and homelessness. Lakewood has ramped up a division of Housing and Thriving Communities that, among other things, works on issues related to homelessness. This slide displays the staffing support and the key services. So staffing support, we have the Homeless Response Coordinator, Neighborhood Support Coordinator, Division Manager, and Housing Resource Coordinator, two homeless navigators, police coresponder CAT, West Metro Fire, and county partners. And then for key services, we have the Navigation Center, Cold Weather Shelter, Encampment Cleanup, Housing Resources, vouchers, CDBG, evacuation prevention, rental assistance, and housing vouchers. And then, of course, we have affordable housing, which we have for staffing support, CDBG, staffing, division manager, housing planner, and then the key services is the expedited 90-day review process for affordable developments, updated zoning rules for ADU, and CD contributions to Colorado Gives in 2024 is $500,000, and then 2025, $800,000. The CDBG programs, eviction prevention, rental assistance, and single-family rehabilitation. So this is the end of my presentation for the city budget, and the second public hearing will be on October 21st. And by charter, it does need to be approved by November 1st. So before we move on to questions and discussion, I wanted to give thanks to the Budget and Audit Board members. The people on the board are three city council members and then three citizen members, or community members. And they are, Councilor Stewart is the chair, mayor, sorry, Mayor Protam Charazai, Councilor Cruz, and the community members are David Engel, Deborah Henspark, and Bobby Wolf. Thank you for your insight and discussion on the city finances. I would also like to thank city council, the city manager, and staff for their work on developing and reviewing the budget. Chair Stewart, do you have something you'd like to talk about?
Sure. Thank you so much, Ms. Bjorklund. We really appreciate all the work that you and your staff have done on the budget as well. Incredibly grateful for all the work that you've done with the Budget and Audit Board specifically. It's been great, and we really appreciate you. Want to thank, again, our wonderful community members, some of who are here tonight. So if there are questions later, they are available to answer questions. I did want to just go back and highlight, the last time that the Budget and Audit Board met, we did unanimously vote to recommend the current city budget in its entirety for passage by the city council. We had a really robust discussion at our last meeting about some of the concerns that city councilors raised. We talked in depth, for example, about the Protected Bike Lanes, about homeless navigation and cold-weather sheltering services, to kind of tease out where those priorities were living in the budget, and making sure that we were communicating that fully to not only the members of our board, but also the rest of the members of the city council as well. I did want to highlight, there are a couple of factors that have been kind of added to the mix, given a couple of pieces of legislation that the city council has recently passed, which I believe is on the next slide. Thank you. So a couple of weeks ago, we did take some council action to reduce the speed limit, the residential speed limit, down to 20 miles per hour, and to pilot an automatic vehicle identification system. Both of those are going to have budgetary impacts. We have some estimates here. These are probably going to be seen in more fully, especially the AVIS system, in our revised 2025 budget, next September and October. But I did just want to highlight that we, as a council, have already taken action that are potentially going to increase our current 2025 budget as we do see it here. And then I also wanted to highlight, for the public, that we do have a couple of proposed amendments, and I'm really appreciative of councilors who sent these in early so that we can have a robust discussion tonight at the first reading. And so here are just a couple of amendments that are going to be potentially proposed tonight for tonight's discussion. Wanted to set that up for us. And thank you so much, Ms. Bjorklund, for adding some context to some of these spends, and really the more accurate representation of how much is actually going to be in the budget for a couple of these line items. So look forward to more discussion of that a little bit later. And again, just wanted to thank our Budget and Audit Board members who are up here on the dais, as well as sitting out in the audience tonight. Thank you all so much for your work on this. It really does take all of us. And thank you to the staff for putting together such a robust budget that really does highlight the priorities and strategic direction of the city and the city council.
Okay. Before we move into Councilor comments and/or question, if there's any questions left, maybe we've rung it all out of everybody. But before we move on to that, we'll go ahead and open it up to public comments, so that our questions can be informed by comments that may come in front of us this evening. I'll also note that we do have at least five comments that are up on Lakewood Speaks right now, and that will, again, remain open tonight and until 10:00 a.m. tomorrow morning. So with that, we'll go ahead, we've got our first public comment, her commentor, Abram Handler. Mr. Handler, as you come up and approach, if you'll give us your name and your ward number, or name and address, and you've got three minutes.
Sure. My name is Abram Handler. I live at 2085 Uinta in Denver. And I know we're here tonight to talk about the budget. However, in the words of Seren Lindgren-Savage, budgets are an expression of principles in dollar terms. Everything relates to budget. Budget relates to everything. Or budget is an energy field created by all living things that surrounds and penetrates us and binds the galaxy together. So in that spirit, please join me in taking a minute to consider how the budget relates to a critical upcoming event, the 40th birthday of City Council Member Roger Lowe. Roger, on the occasion of your 40th birthday, a committee of citizens, including your friends, Paul Selker, Nick Eubank, Katja Solow, Heather Hargraves, Maggie Thompson, Trey Nix, Seren Lindgren-Savage, Matthew Liptka, Council Member Isabel Cruz, and Mayor Wendy Strom have reviewed the Lakewood City budget, and we see that on page 308, the City of Lakewood has allocated $191,000 taxpayer dollars for upgrading traffic signals at 8th Place and Kipling Street. We also see that the City of Lakewood has allocated $250,000 taxpayer dollars for the Kipling Parkway median modifications. However, Councilman Lowe, nowhere, nowhere in this budget is there a single cent for addressing the dangerous traffic at Mont View and Uinta in northeast Denver. Is this intersection in Lakewood? No. However, budget connects and binds the entire galaxy, including this terrible, terrible intersection near my house. Now, Councilmember Lowe, as you know from our extensive communication on this matter, people will come down Mont View at 40 or 50 miles an hour. It's a residential neighborhood, and they are not even looking at the road. We have discussed this in calls, in texts, in emails. We've discussed this many times, and still there is not one cent in the budget. So I'm here on a Monday night, on behalf of the committee, after work. I'm here to say, Mont View and Uinta, Roger Lowe, is a very dangerous intersection, and happy birthday.
Thank you, Mr. Handler.
Point of information, I'm sorry for my friends. There's no excuse for them.
Happy birthday, Councilor. Next, we have Celia Greenman.
That's a hard act to follow. I'm Celia Greenman. I'm in Ward 2. I was noticing when I was reading through the summary of the budget that Mayor Strom had had a comment about the tree canopy. There's $100,000 as a line item for purchase of new trees, and that's been there for the last two years. It also mentions in the summary that there's been an increase in the tree canopy in Lakewood of 2% since, from 2011 to 2019. And I think that's pathetic, because for a city like Lakewood, I know my own backyard has just been shaded out because of the growth of trees. What's happened, because there's only 2% growth, is we've been taking down mature trees. Instead of allocating so much money, or maybe it's not that much money, to new trees, to maintain a tree canopy, try and work with new development to preserve as many trees as possible. Mature trees, they are less maintenance, they provide more shade, more habitat for animals, for insects. We need to do more to preserve our tree canopy, and in addition to adding trees. and in addition to adding trees. Then another item that I saw, what is with this sign on the bridge at the W line? This came up last year in the same budget discussion. And I just, it's $800,000 for a sign. The bridge seems to be working perfectly fine. So I don't understand why we need sign and lighting there. The other thing is that there's the lighting. I mean, we're always being told now about light pollution. And a lot of nightlights, they're just aesthetically unpleasing. They're bad for wildlife. Do we really need that sign at that cost? Because we could put that money toward other. Maybe we could rehabilitate that therapeutic pool at Whitlock, you know, which is, I know it's under consideration, but there's no timeline or, I did not read any details about that. Or we could put it towards other homeless services. Just my two cents about, do we really need the sign? And happy birthday, Roger.
Thank you, Ms. Greenman. And next, we have pool time at Sandy Weathers.
My name is Sandy Weathers and I live in Ward 3. I've lived here going on 15 years now. And during that time, I've come before council many times on a variety of reasons. Regardless of the reason for me testifying, I think there's always a common thread. I often come here proposing various solutions. And a common thread that seems to block some of my ideas, it's always budget. So I am here to discuss the budget today. So whether if it's, I'm asking for bilingual flyers or, you know, most recently I came to talk about family-friendly events with the police, budget always seems to be that roadblock. And I understand as city councilors, like this is like one of the biggest parts of your job. And it's not easy, it's hard because our funds are limited. So, you know, people think you can wave a magic wand and do whatever you want and give the people what they want. But I know from watching you guys along that it's not that easy. So this is why many times, many of us don't get what we want. And we ask for a variety of things. So, you know, one of the things that came up during the presentation are the homeless services. Well, that's great, you know, as mentioned, like two years ago, we had nothing, we had no budget. But now we do, but we still don't have a proper homeless shelter. Many of the traffic and road repairs that we need still remain undone. I want to remind everyone that, you know, we have to rely on people like Amber Varwig to feed our hungry because we don't have a soup kitchen. So these are basic things that we don't have. And I want everyone to imagine what we could have if, you know, we had that unlimited bucket of money, which we don't. I understand where most of our money comes from. It comes from sales tax. And sometimes the city submits grants and we get federal funds. And the federal funds are also limited. But I want to point out, why is that? Why is it that we get crumbs when lately our government is essentially writing blank checks for war? I know that we have asked you, me and my friends have asked you on many occasions to pass a ceasefire resolution. And the answer we get is, no, we don't want to weigh in on foreign matters. Well, I am here to push back on that because we are about to go into World War III because what happened on October 7th has now snowballed into Israel bombing multiple countries. Yemen, they're bombing the West Bank, they're bombing Lebanon. And it doesn't stop and nobody's stopping them. So I'm here to ask you all again to push back on Congresswoman Pedersen because she is unwavering in her support. And it is going to impact us. It is impacting us. When we see right now, people in North Carolina going through what they're going through with Hurricane Helene, they're not getting the help and the aid they need. But again, when it comes to foreign countries asking for money for war and bombs and planes, they get it. So please, push back on her. Please, don't go to her campaign parties. Please, don't ask people to go to her campaign parties. And again, watching this budget presentation, I learned that we had an increase in revenue from investments. So I don't, I'm sorry that we didn't ask this before, but I am here to ask, where are these investments being made? Are any of these investments being made in Israel? If so, we need to divest immediately. And I'll end with that. Thank you very much for your time and free Palestine.
Thank you, Ms. Weathers. All right, do we have anyone else in chambers that would like to speak on the budget this evening? Okay. With that, we will go ahead then and close the first of two public hearings. So we will have another public hearing on this topic on the 21st when we come back for our next, for the second reading. So with that, then we'll go ahead and open up to council comments and questions with regards to the budget. If we have, we're doing that in a minute. If we have any other questions at this time. I know, Council, you've given a lot of time to email them in advance. And for the public, we ask council to do that so that staff has a lot of time to be able to research and thoughtfully respond in the most accurate way to the questions. But inevitably, you will potentially get some up here on the dais this evening. So do we have any council questions before we move on to our motion? And then, once we do the motion, we'll talk about the amendments. Counselor Cruz.
Thank you, just as a question, since I think some points were raised in public comment that I have a couple of questions about, we will have another hearing, right? So we can submit those questions to give staff adequate time to prepare based on what we heard in between?
Absolutely.
Great, and happy birthday, Roger.
All right.
Point of information. Not about my birthday. On the amendments, will we have an opportunity to ask staff questions specifically on the amendments?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, we're doing those separate so it stays very distinctly clear of questions and amendments. Mayor Protam Charazai.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to bring up a little bit more context on the bridge because it's come up a couple of times here tonight and then in public comment. This isn't part of the 2025 budget. This was approved in the 2024 budget and we're seeing it again in the revised budget. $800,000 is the cap. We've been in conversation for more than three years with RTD and CDOT on this topic. And they have finally shown a willingness to share in that cost. So the $800,000 is meant to signal to our staff, we wouldn't go over that and we don't expect that to be that much. There's also been questions about greening up those lights. And that would really not be something that the staff could answer. You know, we could certainly set that as a policymaker, which is what the duty of this body is. But we don't know what those bids will look like and what the best option is for those lights. In our comp plan and our goal setting, placemaking is important. And I know that there are other things that we have to consider for our community. But placemaking is one of the things that we've all shown priority for. And that's consistently shown up in those conversations, which is why this is a carryover and part of the revised budget. But this isn't part of the 2025 budget. This is an approved budget item from last year. So I just wanted to add that context.
Thank you, Counselor Lowe.
Thank you, Mayor. I have just one question for staff that I thought I would take a stab at. And Ms. Bjorkland, thank you very much, A, for the massive amount of work that you and your team put into the budget. B, thanks for fielding a flood of my questions that I know came in Friday. I apologize that I didn't get them to you earlier. Thank you for getting some of them in the public document. I know you're working on some others, so thank you, thank you, thank you. There's one that I wanted to ask, but if it's better handled in the next round, in the next document, that's completely fine. I was curious on sustainability and community development. This was one of my questions, but it came in quite late Friday. Why isn't there a division-by-division breakdown for that department? I was just struck by that. It seemed different from some of the other departments that were listed in the budget.
We, because there was a reorganization and it was re-divided in how it was done, we had a discussion about, do we break it out for each one? And we decided we would wait until next year to do it. So it'll be there next year.
Got it, thank you.
Okay. Then, before we move on to our amendments, I'd like to go ahead and ask for a motion.
Mayor Strom, I move to accept ordinance 0-2024-27 on first reading and order the ordinance to be published in the Denver Post with second public hearing set for October 21st, 2024.
Second. Okay, thank you. And before we move on and introduce the proposed amendments, I wanted to just consult legal for a second to make sure that we are all clear, not only up here, but in the audience, anyone tuning in that's following the work that we're doing this evening. So with regards to the amendments, what we've done is we've brought them forward today so that we can listen to each other, start to learn the process. But I understand and would like some clarification from you on votes. We would not do votes tonight. Is that correct? And can you explain what that process looks like?
Yes. So because the Charter states that you can only approve the budget after two public meetings, any amendment would be subordinate to that, to that final motion? So at this point, any discussion of amendments would be informal. They would be non-binding. If you want to conduct some sort of voting today so that you get a sense of which amendments are appropriate to bring forward at the next hearing, I don't think there's anything that prohibits this body from doing that. But they would be non-binding and with the understanding that anyone could change their vote at the next hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. And what we'll do is, you know, councilors, you guys can bring forward what you wanted to bring forward. And then, based on questions, we can decide if you wanted to, see if there's a vote to have enough to bring it forward back or not. Up to you. So I've seen both of your names on both of them. So I'm not sure who wants to introduce what. I'll let you guys take the floor.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, you know, Counselor Nicestrom and I, we're just really focused, laser focused really on sustainability this year and really trying to meet our targets, the ones that the City Council has set out for. And in addition to that, we also want to make sure that, you know, our planning session, that we're really kind of meeting the goals that City Council is setting out for our planning meetings. And so one of those, of course, was related to bike lanes or reducing VMT. Not only is it a part of our sustainability plan to reduce our VMT by 10%, and that's from the 2015 plan, down by 10% by 2025, frankly, we're not on target to do that. Now, the city's done a great job of putting, you know, bike lanes and painting pavement out there. But where we haven't really made the strides I think we need to make is related to protected bike lanes. You know, I was here in 2018 whenever we, you know, passed that updated plan. And since then, we've gotten six miles of protected bike lanes. And protected bike lanes were in that plan. So we want to see, you know, it's a pretty simple amendment. I think it's pretty straightforward. I think it's a pretty simple ask. And I think we're being pretty modest with really the dollars as well. But wanted just to continue to push a little bit until it hurts a little bit, to put additional resources into getting, you know, more of our bike lane, our protected bike lane assets out on the streets. So we are asking for additional $200,000. We know there's challenges with, you know, putting more and more resources out there. But we want to just push a little bit harder to make sure we have more money available to our Public Works Department to be able to put more of these assets out there. So you all have the amendment. We all saw it on the PowerPoint. Happy to answer more questions. But I think that's a pretty good little summary. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, first hand up to speak, Counselor Mayor Guerrero.
Didn't realize I had been that quick to the button. I think folks know that I'm also very aligned with the idea of having a significant investment in pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure. So I have a couple of questions that are about the amendment, but I want to start with a question about sidewalks because I think that it's relevant. One of the things that I noticed in this presentation of this evening, and something that's been discussed, is essentially you see that there was, that we've spent a pretty small fraction of the total allocated amount of dollars to sidewalks for this year. Sidewalks and like walking paths, et cetera. And I'm wondering if staff would be able to speak at all to why? I think that some of it has to do with other scheduled improvements, has to do with like park plans, has to do with staffing contractors, et cetera. And I think I'm asking that question because I'm essentially wondering like if budget is the main, is actually the main obstruction on bike lanes or if it's more about like road schedules and staffing and that, those kinds of things? And whether or not this additional dollar investment would actually be that equal outcome?
Okay, and for that, we have Department Director Max Kirschbaum for Public Works.
Yes, short answer to that is we still have several contracts yet to award this year. The slide that Holly showed indicated a category that we just chose to call shovel-ready. These are projects that are either close to putting on the street for award or in fact, a few of them that are on that slide could already update because we have very recently opened bids and are ready to make awards on a few of them. So those totals always indicate amounts that have actually been invoiced and paid. So even projects that are already awarded, until they are complete, they're not fully paid out. So we're always going to lag in that somewhat. As well, there are a couple of very large projects in there that involve CDOT tip money and Tabor funds on Sheridan and Wadsworth that also have very large price tags. And as they award, we'll start to see all that money get spent.
Thank you, that's fabulous. And so then I think that the continuation then of that question, which is essentially, do we think that we're, like the, my understanding of some of the answers that we've seen in the longer form, written answers on bike lanes, is that striping and repaving is part of that process and that we're working to integrate that, which is less expensive than like building the full protected bike lane into our scheduling of street and road improvements over the next year? And sort of how these things are layering in terms of like actually needing more dollar investment to do what we need to be doing to catch up? Because I don't disagree that we're behind.
Well, as it relates to the bike lane piece, I would also add that 2024 is the first year that any of the separated bike lines or bike lanes were added, protected or separated. They may have been in various stages of development or council goals for several years. But until this year, there weren't any. So we've added six this year. And I think we've taken a careful look at where else we could invest based on roadways that are already ready for it. In many cases, Garrison being an example, narrowing travel lanes of the vehicles is a key part to establish the buffer area where a separated bike lane would be placed. So that's why the bike lane program is integrated with our paving program because you get double bang for the buck. We can do both things at the same time. And that is a consideration as at the same time. And that is a consideration as, as we develop each year's asphalt mill and overlay program. Secondly, we are in the midst of a bike plan update. It's underway. A lot of activity and a lot of participation at this time. We expect to finish that in the spring of 2025. That would be, that's our next opportunity to try to lay out a, a comprehensive program for how and where bike, separated bike lanes get installed in a manner that we're building toward connectivity and not just individual pieces scattered around, but there's in fact, a, a plan that's leading to better connectivity. So while we're, while we're waiting for that plan to finish and be ready, we, by carrying over unspent dollars from '24, adding budget in '25, will actually have more available for construction in '25 than we had and, and we have spent in 2024. The investments that we're looking at will focus on the intersection part of Garrison and Alameda, because that's kind of our next point as we try to go forward, go north on Garrison. Some significant improvements, that's why there is a design amount you saw on the slide, and there will be a construction amount because it involves not just a separated bike lane, but construction of medians that helps that whole separation of bikes and vehicles. We've also identified, as you saw on the slide, at least two other locations from the 2024 asphalt mill and overlay program that did in fact, set us up for separated bike lane addition in 2025. Those are on Pierce and First Avenue. So all of these pieces integrate together. We're all, we're moving them all in the right direction. And we still have a fair amount of work that we can add in '25 with the budget as it was proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschbaum. Counselor Olver.
Thank you, Mayor. Stay Max. Okay, as the avid bicyclist, or at least one of them up here, and at least, okay, if you, if you, if you bike over 3,000 miles a year, I will bow to you. But I've biked all over and, and I've talked about bicycling, as you know, quite a bit. And in fact, like when I decided to run for this seat, I biked every road in Ward Four. And I have it up on Strava. So I just wanted to throw out my opinion on what we spend money on is, would be, my priority is the bicycle death traps, like the one that you're working on. So I, I love that idea of fixing Alameda and Garrison. That is one of the bicycle death traps that I pointed out several times. I brought in pictures. The other one being the south end of our protected bike lane there on Garrison. So if you go south of Jewel, that's a bicycle death trap. And there's several others. I'm just going to say that I very much favor working on those before working on more protected bike lanes. Because we have X amount of dollars and, you know, that's where it should go first, in my opinion. Thank you.
Counsel, Counsel LeBrière.
Thanks, Mayor. Well, I didn't think I'd be talking so quickly again. I, I was just going to make the point, you know, the more resources you have at your fingertips, the more you're able to do. And that's really what I'm talking about here when it comes to this amendment. It's relatively, it's, it's a super modest amount. We have, I think, $23 million worth of reserve spending in this budget. We have millions of dollars to roll over into this next budget. I'm asking for a couple hundred thousand dollars extra to give extra latitude. I don't know if it'll be used. It might be rolled over. It might be used. But if it is used, I, I could tell you, as someone who's a program manager, when I have more money available at my fingertips, that means I might be more likely to, to spend that money to the goal that I'm, you know, required to, to, to achieve. So I think it's relatively straightforward. It's simple in my mind. Couple extra hundred thousand dollars, might extra get, on average, it looked like those bike lanes were costing us $50,000 a mile. If 200,000 extra dollars, that might be four extra miles. That's four extra miles to get us closer to our goal, to help us reduce our VMT and to meet our, our planning session goal of trying to get more dollars into, into the bike lanes. It's relatively modest. So I hope you'll support it. Thanks.
Counselor Stewart, then Counselor Lo.
Thank you. I, I don't disagree that we need more miles of protected bike lane. And we had a pretty robust discussion about this at the Budget and Audit Board meeting as well, since this was a concern of myself and most frankly, most of the members of the City Council. If we allocated additional dollars in this budget this year, would you be able to spend them this year?
Well, to the extent that we, we still haven't finished laying out our 2025 pavement resurfacing program, which includes various types of resurfacing, but the key one is the mill and overlay program, we will scour that program again for opportunities as we repaint a, a fresh asphalt road to establish the buffer, to build the bike lane at the, you know, at the least cost. So I can't answer that specifically, other than the two locations that were on the slide that came from the 2024 program. But it's, it's likely that there could, there would be other locations that would emerge from the program, yes.
Would they emerge in 2025? Or would they be resurfaced in 2025 and then be, you know, vertical separation put up in '26?
Well, I'll use 2024 as an example. Garrison became an opportunity. We did not, we did not think we were going to be able to go north of Mississippi, but we did. We went all the way to Alameda and because the opportunity was there and we had the budget available. That could happen again. You know, opportunities just like that could happen again. So, you know, as I said, it, it's likely that those, that those type of opportunities would also emerge.
Can I imagine you probably don't have this information on hand, but would love if in the next couple of weeks, we could at least get an estimate of how many roads in the resurfacing and, and restriping, like how many miles do we anticipate being prepped for separated bike lanes? Because I know you're making that plan. I would love to know that information.
I will commit to do the best I can on that. We generally don't have that available till the January timeframe. Then we refine it with our concrete program. And then, as many of you know, generally what happens is I submit a letter to you in February to say, here is the entire program. I'll do the best I can to meet that.
That'd be awesome. My, because my understanding is that that is actually one of the more expensive parts of the process.
Yes, it is.
Okay. So we, we are in fact, investing significantly more in our protected and separated bike lane program right now than actually the line item in the budget does indicate.
Yeah, I would even, I would maybe call it cost avoidance is what it is. Because if we were to take a road not associated with the mill and overlay program, step one would be to mill out and eliminate all the striping that exists and go, go forward from that on a road that is not resurfaced. So that's why we link these things together. So I would call it cost avoidance.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Lo.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Kirschbaum. I am, sorry that I wasn't able to attend on the, on the 18th. I really wanted to. I understand there was a good discussion of this topic and I wasn't there because I had norovirus. So you're welcome. But, but thank you for all the information you provided on this topic. Counselor Stewart frankly took the, almost exactly the question I, I, I most wanted to ask. On, on the question of, could you spend an extra $200,000? I think the answer I heard was, eh, we, we don't have a plan to. It, it probably because of the sequencing of things, it's not obvious to us that we could. But maybe there's a chance, depending on how the next 12 months go, there, there could be opportunities that come up. Is that, is that a reasonable summary of what I heard you just say?
I hope it didn't sound that conditional. I, I don't want to give you a yes or no answer unless I'm sure it's a yes or a no.
Sure, sure.
At this point in time, at the best I think I could say is, it's likely, just as it was in '24, that a, a particular mill and overlay project that will show up on our '25 list could offer a similar opportunity as we encountered this year.
Got it. I don't want to, I, you know, I understand there are useful internal deliberations that happen when you put together the budget. Like, can I just ask, when, as you and your team looked at this issue, which has obviously been a big issue for the city, like was there, are all of the folks in your team who are like focused on, on, on protected bike lanes as a priority, is, are, are they standing behind this, this budget line item? And is there a, is there a comfort with, with this request and this amount in terms of making sure that we have the resources, we need to drive this forward?
I think my presence here does that.
Fair. Can I ask Ms. Bjorklund, just from, I mean, we're talking about $200,000 and every, every penny in this budget is incredibly important. If, I mean, there's sort of two scenarios here. One, potentially that the dollars, some of these dollars could be spent. Two, they can't be, in which case they'll be, they'll, in which case $200,000 will be in this line item unused and would be either carried forward to the next year or potentially, you know, when you come back to council in a year, they would be reallocated. In terms of just thinking about the, you know, the broader financial health, health of having a, an adequate general reserve, is there a meaningful difference from your perspective in whether this $200,000 sits in the general fund reserve or sits in the protected bike lane line item in a scenario where it doesn't get spent down? Like from the, in terms of just our financial planning, is, is there a meaningful difference in where those dollars sit?
Well, we always try to be as accurate as possible in terms of how much we're spending and how much revenue is coming in so that we plan well for multiple years. So if you put too much in the current years, and there's not as much money for the, the later years. So what we try to do is make sure that within the budget, there are concrete plans for what's going to happen with those funds. In this case, this is something that Max doesn't have a concrete plan for and has identified several reasons why it could be more beneficial financially to wait, that you may want to do this as a revised of 2025. If he, after he has his plan for the, for the bike lanes and he's identified what the overlay plan is, then he would be, and has learned lessons from what's happened in terms of the ones that are already there, he'll have more information to determine, yes, we could spend another 100,000 or we could spend another 200,000. But 200,000 is not going to make or break the bank for sure. But the more we do that of putting things in that we don't have a concrete plan for, the more inaccurate our budget is.
Understood. So final question, just as council considers its options here. I mean, the, the amendment proposed is one option. Just thinking out loud a little bit with the rest of council, if, if council instead, instead of doing this amendment, asked for an update, say, six months in, so halfway through the budget for, and sort of directed staff to come back with an update on, you know, since there's clearly a lot of interest particularly in this line item for how, how it's going, you know, are dollars being spent down? Are we on track to spend it down? Could we use more money? And, you know, with, with the possibility of a, of a supplemental request? That's my time. Is that something that we could do? And that was my last question, as you can hear.
So the, the minor, or the, the way that we usually address that is through the revised budget in the following year. But there is the opportunity to do supplementals as well as well at any time during year. Did that answer your question? Just kidding.
Yeah, but partly. I mean, I, I, I understand we can always do a supplemental. I guess, I guess the, the other piece of that question is, could, if, if as an, as we consider policy options here, option one is this budget amendment. It seems to me option two is asking staff to come back to us with an update in six months on how implementation of this line item is going specifically, with the option of a supplemental in the event that there seems to be a case for it. Like, so am I correct that that's another option we could?
Absolutely.
And we could potentially do like a, a motion to that effect, asking for a, an update within six months on this?
Yep.
Okay. I guess I just want to throw it out that that's a, that's potentially another option, given some of the uncertainty here.
Counselor Cruz.
Thank you. I'm going to attempt to time myself now, so we'll see how this goes. Yes. Kind of going on this, this topic, I appreciate Counselor Lo's extra question was my question, so I'll count that in my time about the supplemental piece. The other kind of factor that was really helpful for me when considering this in the Budget and Audit Board meeting, that I kind of wanted to re-ask was a little bit about what are the different prospects with some of these infrastructure expenditures if 2A does not pass this fall?
You mean, how would we fund the infrastructure? Is that your question?
Yeah, like how would it be funded? And also, like, are there any significant kind of things that we have that we know we have to fund, i.e. body cameras that kind of are going to be continual challenges in the future without that, those pots of funds?
It's between a million and $2 million a year that would have to be reallocated to other funds. So it'd have to be reprioritized in terms of how much we're spending from general fund, capital fund, et cetera, that was being paid for by the Tabor Fund.
Thank you.
And that's, sorry. The body worn camera one is a mandate, so it's not something that we have a choice on, which is the largest one, which is just about a million dollars. And the other ones, I'd have to research as to whether they're stoppable or not stoppable.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I wanted to, to bring that to the full body because that was helpful for me as, as potentially the only person who biked to this meeting. I mean, on council, maybe other people in the audience did. The, obviously bike lanes are important to me. I literally went through the Alameda and Garrison intersection today. And I'm very excited for that to change. But all's to say, it's important for me to this, for this program to grow. I'm really interested in maybe this like look back or kind of check-in idea, once we know what the results of the election this November are, so that we understand what our reserves mean. Because I, I do think that we have to be really mindful if we have these million to $2 million a year in things we know we have to fund likely going forward, what these kind of chips away at our reserves will look like. And so I just wanted to, to kind of bring that to the full body, as well as just express that level of concern from me. Because I think, yeah, more money can and should go into this fund. But I think, to me, I would feel more comfortable once we have a better picture of what our funds are going to look like moving forward.
Counselor Nice, Jim.
Thank you. I guess in terms of this discussion, my concern here is that we're talking about $200,000, which is a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money in comparison to a lot of other things that we're discussing. There's been a lot of push for walkable, bikeable communities. And yet, we're asking for an amendment to move this forward and consider enhancing the budget, making more bike lanes available. And to Counsel Olver's point, I am an avid cyclist. I do more of it in the dirt now because I find it to be safer. But I also agree that that area south of Jewel is very dangerous on Garrison. But I don't think we should lose sight of the fact that as Counsel LeBrière brought up, we have not made significant strides in VMT. up, we have not made significant strides in VMT, or vehicle miles traveled, for those that don't know all of his acronyms, which I'm getting immersed in. But, and we are also significantly behind in greenhouse gas emission goals. And there will be repercussions for that coming down the road, but the short-term repercussions are the health and welfare of our citizens. And we are now, in October, we have had a 90-degree day, we've had two weeks where we've exceeded heat records, and today, we had an air quality alert. So, I think at this point, this is something that should be moved forward, for those reasons alone, and for increasing bike safety for everyone out there that rides currently, and hopefully, more people will be riding. I've seen a big uptick in people on e-bikes, which scares me sometimes, but, just in terms of bike etiquette. But I think it's become a very useful tool for people to commute, and to go to the stores, and those types of things. And if we can enhance that program and move it forward, it's going to be a way of chipping away at the strides that we haven't made so far from greenhouse gas emissions and getting more cars off the road. So, thank you.
Counselor Ryan.
Just a question from Mr. Kirschbaum. If we put $200,000 in the budget for bike lanes now versus putting $200,000 into January, does that change any of your processes, or planning, or anything? I mean, does it, is it significant that we put $200,000 now versus putting it in later? For your planning?
It doesn't change the processes that we're following. I can, I can say, we're moving as fast as we can.
I think, you know, as, as I recognize that sort of where we're trying to get to tonight is not a full vote, but a little bit of understanding of where folks are, I just want to be transparent that I do think that, this point that it is only $200,000, I think, works in the opposite direction for me, from how it sounds like it does for Counselor Nystrom. I think that I'm seeing in this budget and the budget last year, for the first time, real investment in bike lanes, and really significant investment, as well in sidewalks. I'm also seeing the amount of parkland that we have continued to work towards and prioritize, and I'm thinking about the potential of our Tabor refunds having to happen. And so, if I think about the amount of work that's actually in here, and the amount of money that's actually in here to lead us towards the continued expansion of bike lanes, recognizing that the repaving and the striping and the traffic has to be dealt with first, that $200,000 that doesn't have real plans, real concrete plans, as was also just related, that is typically how our projects and our budget are laid out, doesn't feel worth the precedent, and doesn't feel worth the risk, given that it would be relatively small impact, compared to the really significant and large investments we see here. I think that amending the budget is a tool that is necessary, and we obviously would not want to ever get rid of that, but it is something that should be done with an immense amount of caution for the potential of these small light items adding up, when we are doing this in the course of months, in a public lay of the land, and I don't actually think that any of us here on the dais have the detail needed to make a budget of this size function. And so, recognizing that we do have these additional opportunities to ensure that the budget is not the barrier to continued growth of our bicycle, protected bike lane program, I'm just, I'm not inclined to want to essentially take that risk, set that precedent, for what I don't see as real significant impact, given that this budget already is significantly impactful on sustainability, on bicycle protection and safety, on pedestrian infrastructure investment, and on sustainability. And so, I wanted to ensure that that was just very clear, that that's where I was leading at this point.
Thank you, Counselor. I will go ahead. I don't have any hands up at the moment, so I'll take a moment. With this amendment, I would also not be supportive at this time. For me, 2A, does that pass, doesn't pass, is not insignificant as we're moving through this decision-making process. I am enthusiastic, and yes, wanted to reemphasize, that it wasn't very long ago that we did not have any line item in this budget at all for this work, and so, excited that we're moving forward with this, and that we've got so much overspend from, or underspend from last year, that we're able to move forward to continue this investment, and actually continue it in a more significant way next year than we even did this year, because I know part of the equipment purchase was part of the expenditure last year. So, I am enthusiastic about the idea of revisiting this, after, you know, the program of what needs to be redone next year, also knowing that we've got the bicycle plan coming up, and also realizing that we'll have a little bit more certainty with regards to, especially dedicated cash flows, moving past the election in November, if that were to pass, and we know that a third of that bucket would go to items like this that would increase and improve our infrastructure, our sidewalks and our roads. And also, you know, a big shout out and a thank you to staff. You know, I, my other job is I'm a financial planner, and it is incredibly important, when we're planning forward, that we don't ever accidentally not spend what we think we're going to spend. What you typically hear from everyone in here, outside, everything is more expensive than we planned, everything costs more, and so, the conservative approach that the city takes in planning for our budget, I think, is very, it's been helpful. It's helped us navigate lots of economic ups and downs, and not having to lay off staff, like other communities have been able to do. So while I love the idea of continuing to work on this, I'm really excited at what you guys have added in now, and I look forward to adding more in the future, when we've got a little bit more uncertainty and a more specific plan.
Counselor LeBure, and then Counselor Lowe.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would just add, I do think we should be doing more for sustainability. I think we're really lacking in that area. We didn't, and, and that's part of the reason, you know, we're having this discussion. We had $300,000 in telecommunications revenue that we foregoed earlier in the year, because we gave, like, a tax holiday for that. The council gave a million-dollar property tax decrease last year, that was $1.3 million. This is relatively small potatoes in the bigger picture of the budget, but these things also add up. And what I'm trying to say is that our community keeps pushing for more and more, you know, capital improvement projects. I do think, we need to think bigger, and we need to think about our capital improvement fund, and how we're funding it, and reevaluate that. But really, this is not meant to be a, you know, overhaul of the bicycle plan, or a giant leap forward. It's really to show that our planning discussions early in the year, you know, matter, and that we're going to continue to invest in what our community is asking us to invest in. And that's really where I am with that, is I want to put some money, you know, towards these kind of investments, and have a real robust discussion about the budget as a council, because we don't really do that. You know, we do that once a year around this time. I think we should take a look at our budget processes and our Budget Audit Committee, and have more of these discussions throughout the year, to make sure that we're all on the same page in moving investments forward, and that we all understand the projects that the city's taking on. So there's a lot of things we could have done, and amendments we could have proposed. Again, like I said, I think we're spending 20, over $20 million in reserves in this budget, but what I'd like to see is more, you know, capital investment, in particular, in ones that we know have a nexus between meeting the goals that we've set out as a city. So we have a goal to reduce GHG emissions by 60% by 2030, and we're only at 9%. So that's a huge goal that we need to try to, try to obtain. And, you know, I want to make sure, as a council, we're really invested in having that discussion to get us there as well. So, anyway, I think I've said enough, but I would like to do just sort of a vote, just to put it up on the board, and continue having this discussion. Thanks.
Counselor Lowe, then Counselor Over.
Thank you. I just want to say, I really deeply sincerely appreciate Counselors LeBure and Nystrom bringing this amendment. I do. I think this is a productive, useful, timely discussion on an important topic, that clearly council feels strongly about. And I, I understand, having worked with you all for almost a year, that there's clearly some, I think, understandable frustration about, about, you know, not having clear support for this amendment at this time, but I think this is a useful discussion. I am very torn on this question. I really think that the bike, the separated bike lanes is a really important priority. I want to see us move forward on that. I was on a bike the other day, for the first time in a while, and we were biking all over the city, and we biked on the protected bike lane, and it made a big difference, just makes a big difference. You feel a lot safer when you're on a bicycle, when you're on one of those protected bike lanes. So I just think this couldn't be more important. For all the reasons that we've kind of already gotten into, I just, I think that there are, I have some concerns right now about allocating an extra $200,000, when we're getting pretty clear feedback from staff that they don't have a plan to spend it right now. So I guess I'd respectfully suggest to the authors of the amendment, either an alternate strategy or a fallback strategy, totally understand if you want to push the amendment, is to instead, if the amendment doesn't have the votes, to make a motion, basically directing staff to come back with an update in six months, on how implementation of this line item is going, and whether it's being spent down, and what the, sort of, get a preview of what we're going to see in the 2026 budget, and, and how we can, as expansively as possible, accelerate moving forward on this line item. It seems to me that would accomplish something. It also gives us the chance to kind of look at this after we know about what happens with 2A, after we have a clear picture on what happens with the Tabor Fund, and, you know, hope, I think it would be useful to get feedback from staff on how this is going in 2025. If there is an opportunity to do more protected bike lanes in 2025, I would very much favor a supplemental in 2025, and I would certainly vote for that. So if there are other opportunities to do protected bike lanes that staff identify, I would be very supportive of seeing a supplemental move forward at that time. And I guess I just, I just, it's probably obvious, but I want to signal as clearly as possible that I, like, we've got an awful lot of opportunities over the next five-plus years to do protected bike lanes, I think, in the city. I think it's an important priority. I would love to see us be as forward-leaning as is feasible, in thinking about the 2026 budget, about what other parts of the master bike plan could be prioritized for protected bike lanes. So, I think that's where I'm coming down on this, as a no for now, for the reasons that we've heard about, but I would like to see an update, and I, and I'm hopeful that maybe Counselors Nystrom and LeBure would consider offering that as a motion, if this amendment doesn't have the votes tonight, or on the 21st.
Counselor Over.
I wonder if...
It's not that I don't know how to pronounce your name, there's a few lights that have lit up, so. Counselor Over Cruz, then Sharaz Aye.
Oh, boy. Okay, I was wondering if Counsel LeBure would be acceptable to amendment to taking out the words "protected bike lanes" and just putting in "bike connectivity," and let our staff decide, because it seems like they're on top of it, to me. You know, because my problem is the way it's spent. I don't really want to spend it now on bike lane, protected bike lanes, but that is the will of council, obviously. But taking that out and giving the ability to decide, it sounds to me like you already know where to go, and I heard you talk about intersections, and that's what I'm interested in. And so, I would definitely vote for an amendment along those lines, and you could double the amount of money, or triple it in that case, and I'd still vote for it. Thank you.
I just have a point of information. We're not actually voting on an amendment tonight, because it's not legal. Okay.
We can do our unofficial indication of interest, though. Yeah.
Counselor Cruz.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to indicate that, in our informal indication of interest tonight, I will be a no on the amendment. I am very interested, though, in the conversation we were having, that I think Counselor Stewart prompted a bit ago, about whether more money in the budget would mean more bike lanes. I maybe want to dig into that a little bit more, because I feel like maybe we had a slightly different discussion at the Budget and Audit Board about that. So, I am indicating that that is not necessarily a forever no, based on what that conversation is, but do just really want to emphasize that I think that there, particularly since this is such a monumental year, in terms of what the election will mean for our budget moving forward, that this could be really an opportunity to leverage some of that supplemental conversation. So, just wanted to explain what my indication of interest meant.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Sharaz Aye.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to share, since we are doing an unofficial vote, that I would also be a no at this point, because I think there is an opportunity, and it's clear to staff where the priorities are of this council, on bike connectivity, or protected bike lanes, or whatever that is. So, for me, I appreciated the comment earlier from Counselor Mayat-Guerrero, just around precedent for us having a desire to really reinforce our values in the budget, but not necessarily pairing that emphasis in extra dollars with a plan. And so, if we're hearing from staff that there's not quite a plan, and we know there's an opportunity for a revised budget, and if, I imagine if something came up, and you saw the opportunity, that you would feel comfortable coming back to council and saying there is an opportunity, that that would be where I would land on that. I do want to say, I think it's a little unfair to say that, you know, that without making this investment, we're not signaling to the community that we, that this is a priority, because we have made significant gains in showing that this is a priority, in the sense that, you know, two councils ago, this wasn't a thing that was even being talked about. And so, we have protected bike lanes going in, we have conversations about road diets, we have considerations around how we're paving our streets, and what that looks like in the future. And so, you know, I hope the community does understand that this is something that we're talking about, and it is something that we value, and that not, you know, increasing the dollar here because it doesn't have a plan, isn't necessarily an indication that that isn't part of our value. So, thank you.
Counselor Ryan, and then Counselor Nystrom.
I share the last few comments, and really, it's more of the unknown. It's frankly, it's just unfortunate that the way things work, you don't have the information on the paving and the contractors, it's just the way things function, it doesn't quite align with the budget, and so, we're making our best estimates at this time. I will signal right now that if you come to us in January, and you say, we have this fantastic opportunity, if you double the bike lane budget, I'm more likely than not to be supportive of that, but based on the fact that we just don't know at this time, any more than what you and your staff were so graciously diligent in preparing for us, and that with the unknown on the Tabor vote, at this time, I'm a no. But you come to us in January, and you say, you know, we can do a lot more, because we're going to be doing some amazing, we're going to be doing some paving that's going to have some great connectivity, I'll be very supportive of that. Thank you for your work.
Counselor Nystrom.
Yeah, I just, in light of the comments, I appreciate everybody's thoughts on this and their input, but I guess, you know, much like many things in the budget, there's a lot of planning that has to be done. There's a lot of things that have to be laid out. There's a lot of grant money that's coming in, that has to be mapped out. You know, we're not in the business of asking Max to tell us how they're prioritizing things, and how they're putting, how they're rolling out their plans. I, you know, again, we are woefully short of our greenhouse gas emissions goals, we have a ongoing declining quality, air quality, in this city, and anything that we can do to help that, we should be doing. It needs to be a multi-pronged effort, in many different capacities, and this is just... It needs to be a multi-pronged effort in many different capacities, and this is just one example. So providing the resources, and again, Max has been doing this a while. He knows what he's doing. I'm sure he can prioritize and establish a game plan for connectivity on some of these bike lanes that would probably be a nice boost to some residents and be beneficial to them. I think there's a lot of things in this budget that we don't have fully planned out yet, and this is, you know, not a unique situation. So just for what it's worth.
Okay, thank you, councilors. And per Counselor LeBure's interest, we're going to go ahead and do our informal indication of interest vote for this particular amendment before we move on to the others. So at this time, given the information that we have, would you be supportive of considering this amendment when we come back together for an actual vote on October 21st? All right, and that fails with the nays being, sorry, that fails seven nos, three yeses, nays being Strom, Mayat Guerrero, Stewart, Ryan, Sharazai, Lo, and Cruz. Okay, and for our next amendment, we have Counselor Nystrom.
Okay. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to take a look at this, but we are asking for additional money from the reserves for, you know, as I mentioned earlier, for sustainability Community Development Department to incentivize residents and, in terms of electrifying their appliances and other greenhouse gas strategies. We have some grant money that's coming. It's going to be focused on LIDAR neighborhoods. But this is, in essence, it's one of the things that we laid out in the planning meeting in March. There's nothing budgeted for it at the moment, and that's concerning. This is also, based on the recommendations from the LAC, an opportunity, as they put it, low-hanging fruit, to try to address and mitigate some of the emissions that are generated in residential homes in our community by gas appliances. And that is a significant contribution to the emissions in our city. And again, our air quality is not where it should be or could be. And it is important that we start addressing this. We have had a sustainability plan for almost 10 years, and there is not significant progress in this area. And it's not something we can put off any longer. It has to be addressed. It is essential to our quality of life, and it's essential to our survival as a species. That's the bottom line on that. So we are looking for support on this so that we can get this up and running, and it will augment some of the other programs that we've received grant money for that are currently in planning phases. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And firsthand up, I have Mayor Protam Sharazai.
Yes, thank you. This, I have some questions for staff on this. With that, we will bring to the microphone the Director of the new department I won't remember correctly, Planning and Sustainable...
Sustainability.
Sustainability and Community Development Director Travis Parker.
Good evening.
Thank you. So I understand that there are some plans. I also worked for an agency that contracted with the city to retrofit low-income qualifying homes in the community, looking at census tract and from an equity lens. And what I'd like to understand, and this may be a conversation too for Counselor Nystrom and LeBure, is just from the department's perspective, is this just doubling, is there a plan for this not to be a double down on folks who can afford a heat pump already, and then they're getting a rebate from the utility company, and then they're getting a rebate from the federal government, and now the city of Lakewood is giving them a rebate? Or is there, would this be an incentive for folks who, this would be out of reach for them?
It's a great question. So, yeah, there's a lot of moving parts in this space. And you're absolutely right. Traditional rebates, a lot of the federal stuff, a lot of the state stuff, is a rebate, which is, right, people that can afford the project, pay for the project, and then they get the money back in their taxes. And people that can't afford the project can't do it to get the rebate. A lot of the newer work, both at the regional level and anything that we do here in Lakewood, would be focused on point-of-sale incentives, right? So buying down the cost of whatever system that we're incentivizing. So, yeah, we are looking at that, both on the regional level, to connect our citizens with those programs that are offering point-of-sale programs. And any program that we start here in Lakewood, whether it be with the 350 we've budgeted, or the additional 400 that's being proposed here, would be focused on those, you know, point of purchase.
So, thank you. That's really helpful. And then, you know, thinking about the conversation we just had about laying precedent for putting money towards things that don't have plans, it sounds like there is a plan in place, and we would just be inflating then that budget that's already in place for us to be able to, like, scale that economy of scale.
Absolutely. So, yeah, you will see there's $350,000 in the 2025 budget funded through Greenhouse Gas Fee and Lue. And that money is intended for, among other things, you know, consolidating resources around larger grant programs, the state, the federal, the regional grant programs, as well as filling in any gaps in those programs. So if there's particular sustainability improvements that aren't being funded, or if there are only rebates and not point-of-sale incentives, we want to use our local money to fill in some of those gaps in the larger programs.
How much time do I have? One more question. So we are woefully behind on our greenhouse gas emissions goals, as is everyone across the metro area. And there are metro-wide goal setting that we participate in. I guess I would ask staff, is this the best return on investment? If we put $750,000 to this project, is this going to have the biggest reduction in greenhouse gas emissions? Or are there, you know, could we give $400,000 to something else that may have a bigger return? Because I hear from the councilors in Ward 5, that ultimately, this is the goal they're driving to, is to reach that.
Staff and I have been asking ourselves that very same question over the past few weeks, and there's no good answer. This is one path towards that goal, and there are many others. And it's really not possible to say, you know, what is the best return on investment.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Cruz, then Counselor Nystrom.
Thank you. And I appreciate that question, Mayor Protam. That was something that was certainly on my mind, too, in thinking about how we leverage equity in this piece. And then thank you, Mr. Parker, for that clarification, that there are $350,000 in funds in the current budget that are planned to be used as we kind of understand all of these rebate programs, including, it seems like, a state one that will be coming online in 2025, that is sort of targeted from an equity perspective. I think it was the home energy rebate program. Did I get that right?
Quite possibly.
Okay. So I guess my question is, like, do we have a sense of what the dollars we're putting into the budget already are going to be drawing down? Or is that something that's on the horizon? And so do we not totally even know kind of like what the pockets we're working with are?
That's something that we're working on. This is such a rapidly evolving space, right? And so, yeah, last year, there were zero local dollars in this space, right? And now we're talking about 350,000. Meanwhile, we've got over half a billion dollars of potential grant opportunities for the region, right, that we can tap into for our citizens. So this is something we're working quickly to try and get a sense of what's going on in the space, how we can help our residents access it, and again, what gaps we need to fill in with our local money. And these are questions we all, we hope to be answering over the next few months.
That's helpful. Do we have a sense, and the answer can totally be, we're still figuring this out. This is just something that's coming forward for me. Like, do we have a sense if the budget we have allocated will, would be sufficient, if there's like a local share or any kind of like thing we need to put forward to draw down any of these funds?
Kind of like Mr. Kirschbaum's answer, it's impossible to say at this time, right? It's certainly possible that we could spend $750,000 in rebates next year. It's certainly possible that we won't be able to distribute the 350 we've got budgeted now. We just, we don't know at this time.
That's helpful. And then, can you speak a little bit about how some of the new FTE will be supporting with some of this work as well, to support folks on the ground?
The new FTEs are both grant-funded positions. There's two new positions coming in January, and they will be specifically created to, specifically hired to create the Building Benchmarking and Energy Performance Program. So they will spend a year or two benchmarking existing building performance in the city of Lakewood, and then the subsequent years, building a performance program that will require energy targets for existing buildings. So the new positions won't be specifically working on this. However, they will free up existing staff resources that are working on that benchmarking program that will no longer have to.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Counselor LeBure, then Counselor Nystrom.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Director. Appreciate your comments. What was I going to say? Let's see. Well, I'm sorry, some of you missed my Colorado Municipal League speech on what local governments can do. But at least half of our energy usage is related to buildings and transportation. So very directly a part of our policing powers here in local government, which hence the VMT reduction discussion we just had. And now we're talking about incentives, which also goes to our building energy reduction use reductions, right? And the way I opened up that, my little TED Talk there, was really, it's quite simple, really, to reduce GHGs. A professor really laid it out to me well years ago, and I'd love to have him come and speak here. He's fantastic. But it's really pretty simple. He's very direct. He said, you just got to quit burning stuff, is kind of the simple answer. And the way we do that is by getting people heat pumps, electrification, electrify vehicles, electrify bikes, micromobility, VMT, you know, electrified water pumps, electrified agricultural pumps, electrified mowers. I mean, and then you change the grid, right? We know Excel Energy is changing. They're going to be 80% renewable energy, I think, by 20, gosh, is it 30? 2030? Or is it, I think it's 2030. So that's how we get there. That's how we reduce our emissions. And the emission gains that the city's seeing is directly related to what Excel's doing. So that's great. But we want to do our part. And that's what this whole discussion is really about. So I hope people will support additional dollars to our newly developed Sustainability Department. And I know we already have, we've done good stuff. We've done good stuff in this space. I'm really excited about that. I want to continue to see that. Counselor Nystrom and I, we had the, we went separately. We didn't plan this, but we were looking at the trash haulers from Republic, fully electrified earlier today, only 3,000 pounds more in weight. They get, like, four times as much trash and tonnage in the back of the truck. They're fantastic. And I hope you all have an opportunity to go check them out. Louisville, fully electrified trash haulers, and that's where we want to see this city get at some point in the future. We were just talking with the director earlier about this today. Anyway, I hope you'll support additional dollars going to this space. We want to see this new department thrive with as much resources as we can get it. So, thanks.
Counselor Lo, and then Counselor Nystrom.
Can I ask a quick, a simple question that risks me looking slightly dumb, but I'll go ahead and ask it anyway. The $350,000, is it in the budget somewhere? Did I, did I, is it, I've been trying to find it.
It is. I'll let them tell you where it is.
So, and I'm sorry, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. Feel free to follow up later. I just, I'd love, since we're having this discussion, I'm trying to find the actual page. I know there's details in the Q and A that you helpfully circulated.
Can I just, as a point of information, we, Counselor LeBure and myself met with Holly last week. She was gracious enough to give us some of her time. I just want to clarify that the $350,000 that we're talking about is not realized until the end of 2025. And that's part of the purpose, unless I misunderstood you, that is part of the purpose for this money, is because that is not actualized until the end of the year. And once again, from a sense of urgency and importance of reducing our greenhouse gases, that this funding would be available at the beginning of the year to help us get moving. So that's just what I wanted to make a comment on. Thank you.
So there's $150,000 in 2024, and then $200,000 in 2025. And that's on the expense side. So it's, would be appropriated as of when you approve the budget. The funding, which Counselor Nystrom is referring to, we have collected $221,000 as of today, or as of year-to-date. We're expecting it to be about, or forecasting it to be about $390,000 by the end of '25. So normally, we would not allocate for a particular project unless we actually have the money in hand. But in this case, there's been an exception made that we're making the assumption that we will be getting these funds in. If we do not, then we'll have to backfill it with something like general fund.
And just, we're talking about the greenhouse gas mitigation fee revenue, right?
Yes.
So there's a very helpful answer on this in the Q and A document, and this is also laid out, I think, in the memo that the city made public some time ago about sort of all the sustainability initiatives. Is that, is there a breakdown of the greenhouse gas mitigation fee in the 2025 budget? This is not, frankly, the most important question, but I just, if there's a, if there's a page of the budget I should be looking at to better understand where that is, I'd like to find it.
It's not going to be easy to find.
We can, we can, we can handle it between now and 10/21, too.
Yeah. I mean, it's not specifically called out on a page number in the book.
Okay.
But it is in the, it's in a line item in the budget.
Okay. Thanks.
That's why you couldn't find it.
Great. I feel better now. Thank you.
Mayor Protam Sharazai, then Counselor Stewart.
Thank you. I want to follow up. I'm not sure that I quite understood what Counselor Nystrom was saying. Is the $400,000 amendment, because we're concerned that the $350,000 in there, like, to me, what was being described was like a cash flow issue. So I guess I need to just understand, like, we're going to do the project, we're incentivizing regardless, but the money is reimbursable, and we'll realize it fully by the end of the year. But that doesn't negate our ability to do the project? So I guess I wanted to understand from the folks proposing the amendment, was the amendment because you want to bolster this line item, or because it was concerned that the line item wouldn't be realized? Because what was being described was, to me, being, in my understanding, was really cash flow. And I just got to think the city of Lakewood doesn't have a cash flow issue. So that's a question for you, Counselor Nystrom.
There's a couple aspects to this. One is that the LAC has advised that the $350,000 would be used up very quickly as an incentive program. I don't think we have a cash flow problem necessarily. But again, we're trying to make up for lost time here. We've, we have a lot of work to do in this space. And, you know, how much money we have right now on the table versus how much will be actualized by the end of 2025 is one aspect of the concern. It's also because... It's also because that is coming from allowing builders to not meet our greenhouse gas standards when they're developing properties. It's kind of a oxymoron in my mind, but I also feel that, you know, based on recommendations from LAC, that we need more money in this bucket, and to be able to facilitate any kind of meaningful gains in the immediate future.
One more point of clarity. You mentioned developers. Is the intention here, though, residential homes, or is this for incentivizing developers as well?
No, this isn't, the intent here is for residents, residential buildings, homes. And again, we have a grant coming to benchmark on commercial properties, but again, that's gonna be benchmarking for two years, and then after that point, there'll be an action plan based on that. That's a lot of time and a lot of emissions that will continue to be released into our air, and will affect the region.
No? Counselor Cruz, then Counselor Lowe.
Sure.
I guess I'd like to direct this at Mr. Parker, then. Could, thank you very much for the information you provided in the answer to Counselor Cruz's question a little bit ago, Mr. Parker. The, taking a step back, I'm, I think the point, the broader point that Councilors Nystrom and Labure are making here is, one, I fully agree with, which is the LAC recommended that, you know, one of the best things we could do is try to sort of leverage city, you know, limited city resources to accelerate pulling down state and federal resources as much as possible. It appears to me the city is doing an incredible job on multiple fronts, and I think I want to lift that up. I want to celebrate that. The $5 million grant we just got from DOE is a great example of that. There's a lot of other good things that are summarized in the 10-page memo that the city put out on this front. One of the broader points the council has identified is, is there more that we can do to help Lakewood residents pull down, you know, qualify for federal tax credits for things like heat pumps, and, you know, other retrofits and other sort of residential home modifications? Are there other things that we can do? It's still not, it's a little bit unclear to me. Apologies if part of this is repetitive with what you, what you said a moment ago. But of this, of the revenue coming in from the greenhouse gas mitigation fee, could, can you, specifically on this point of, you know, how we're going, our plans to help Lakewood homeowners access those federal dollars? Part of the answer that we got in the Q and A document is, is that the Colorado Energy Office is going to be rolling out a fairly ambitious program, as I understand it, next year. And so in some ways, this is maybe a couple of months premature, that once, once the COE resource is available, there'll be a chance for Lakewood to opt into that. Could you walk us through one more time, like, of the resources that are summarized here, like, what is going specifically to help Lakewood homeowners access these federal tax credits? And is there anything more that could be done with additional resources to help Lakewood homeowners do that more? Or is it, or is it hard to answer that question until we have a clear picture of the state COE program?
So, yeah, I can't give you a complete answer right now, because we are still assessing all of the programs that are out there, and how best to connect our residents with these programs. But that is the first outcome of the work that we're doing right now. And the first use of any of this money will be to get those resources online, create any resources that we need to create to make it as easy as possible to connect the right, the people with the right resources for what they want to do. The bulk of the money, then, would be used for subsequent programs that we create, incentives for, that aren't covered sufficiently or aren't covered at all by the programs that we're currently assessing. So the answer is yes, we will be creating these resources, defining these programs, connecting the people with them. That will happen without a huge budget, right? Without a huge need for budget. The bulk of any money that would be spent would be subsequent to that in the, you know, the gaps that we fill.
So I guess, in a similar theme to the idea I floated on the, on the last amendment here, I mean, I, my understanding is there's already a plan in the works to provide council with periodic updates, and we're, I know we have some requests for council action on that front to formalize that, that we'll be voting on, I think not tonight, but in our next meeting or two. Will, as part of the periodic updates that your department already plans to give council, will we be, or hopefully that we'll be getting from council over the next year, will we be getting more details on that over the next six months?
Absolutely.
And if we, I mean, great, that's excellent. Thank you. And that's, that's something that we could potentially make official with, with a motion as, as part of the budget process, either tonight or in two weeks?
Make official.
Could, could we direct, I mean, it sounds like we could, if council directed, you know, the city manager's staff to provide an update on, on how implementation of this program is going over the next six months, it sounds like that, that fits in well with plans that you already have in the works.
Yeah, I think we already have plans in the works to bring regular quarterly updates on sustainability at large to the council, and that can be part of that, those updates, absolutely.
And that will, that could explicitly break out, you know, how these dollars are being used, and specifically how these, you know, how we're leveraging the, there's a lot of different pots of money here, which is great, because there's multiple things going on, but how we're leveraging the revenue from these programs, the new state COE resources, specifically to help Lakewood homeowners pull down these IRA federal tax credits.
Absolutely. And what new programs we're proposing locally.
Okay. Thanks.
No hands up? Counselor, yeah, Guerrero. You know that had to happen.
I, I think that the line of questioning that Counselor Lowe just engaged in, I guess I, one of the things that I think I'm struggling with, with the amendment process in general is sort of this idea that exactly this process, and it's also something that you said similarly to the, to the last proposed amendment of, will we get updates from staff on that? Is there, are there additional opportunities for us to fix funding? And I think, I think that part of why I'm struggling with the idea of amending the budget, excuse me, outside of the sort of much longer, both staff and then budget and audit board process, is this exact idea that, that that's how this budget was made in the first place. That like us asking for additional specific plans that are beyond what was asked for as additional specific plans and proposals for this budget, doesn't quite make sense to me, be, like, if it's, if it's also then not engaged with all the other priorities that we're working on. So obviously, sustainability is one of our priorities that we are working on. But what I mean is that, okay, so we will have our retreat, and we will be able to reevaluate and re-enumerate, here's all of the larger buckets of priorities we are still agreed on, and sort of what direction are we going in? And we have conversations at length really frequently about what is the investment that's being made in sustainability, and how is it being used, and what should be being tapped in that's different. We also get really excellent and helpful information from community members who stay really tapped in, and from partner organizations in addition to staff, about what grants are available, what programs we should be engaging in. And so I guess, the fact that the questions that you were just asking are, this is already a process we've asked for, we can make sure that this is a component of it, really makes sense to me. But I don't, I don't know that it makes sense for like each, because I say this because I think that I have really similar issues, like really similar questions on, say, our homeless response, right? We have more in here than we have in the past. We had more in the last budget than we had before that. For me, it will still not actually fix our homeless problem. It will still not actually provide relief and survival for all of the people that live on the streets in Lakewood, which I see as equally prescient and necessary and urgent as I do climate change. They will also be deeply impacted by climate change, as they already are, right? That extreme weather, they're the most vulnerable, are people who don't have access to climate control. But I don't find it appropriate that, like, beyond then my regular council work, I am asking through the budget process for staff to generate additional support, additional reports, and additional line items, and additional requests, given that they already did that for this budget, and I, and I trust that they did that, because it was already a shared council priority that we had all expressed. So, and a community priority that was then expressed during the budget audit meetings. So I think that, I guess I'm wondering if, if maybe staff, maybe Ms. Bjorkland could just remind us a little bit about that process? I feel like some of that is getting lost for me within, within these discussions on things that I care a lot about, but that this, that this is a discussion for, for the budget, of how this is reflecting council priorities, the community's priorities all along the way. And what I see in this budget, as I did last year, is more investment in the priorities that at least I have expressed, and that my community and my constituency has expressed to me than I've ever seen before. And so for me, that, that means that that job, while it needs to continue to happen, has happened for this document to at least a really reasonable level of due diligence. And so, wondering if you could help me just re-center a little on the process?
Yes, you're, you're absolutely right. It's, that is the purpose of the budget process, is to have this sort of global look at everything in terms of what kind of resources do we have available, what are the risks in those resources, and also what are the needs across the city. So really, we try to encompass in that budget process, starting with what are the goals that the council has set at the beginning of the year, and then throughout the year, staff and multiple agencies work together with the community to find out what are the needs, what is, what is the desires of different areas, and incorporate that. It's done through surveys, through community meetings, all kinds of sources of gathering that information throughout the year. During the budget process, they take, the staff take all that information. Have I been timed out? Keep going. That, all that information is then incorporated into what the departments recommend in terms of what to put into the budget. My staff work on what are the revenues that we're going to be getting, and what are the risks of those revenues. Counselor Cruz had brought up the, the Tabor Fund, and if that doesn't pass, that's going to have an annual impact of a million to $2 million, but also the one-time things, like spending on sidewalks, which is not an annual impact, but is something that will no longer get funded from it. If we're taking things outside of that process, and making decisions on its own without considering all those other things, then you may be making decisions where you can't change something later in the year when you talk about budget, because you just don't have enough money for it. So that's why we try to incorporate as much as possible in the budget process. And instead of doing individual supplementals, doing a revised budget is because you are including it in that overall process of looking at, well, how much are we in total spending on sustainability? How much are we in total spending on housing, affordable housing? How much in total are we spending on homelessness, you know, or infrastructure? So, and all the things that we have to do regardless every single day to support the core services that we do as a city, those cost a lot of money. And we have to make sure that we're able to maintain that with the revenues we have, the economy that's happening, and anticipating all of that. So I don't know if that answered your question, but that's the, the process in which we try to encompass as much as possible. And those really individual things throughout the year tend to be more like grants, where we're getting additional money plus the expense with it. So it's not something that will potentially inhibit the other things that would be identified during the encompassing budget process.
Thank you. I don't know how the timing works, I, but I only spoke for half of it. I just, it did answer my question, I want to say. And I think that my continued struggle on this one in particular is that this feels like broader and more urgent, and less specifically reflected within the budget than, say, bike lanes, which to me, I'm like, I really think that we're on track. And so I think that this is exactly what I'm wrestling, is that then sort of what then, within our revised budget process and our next budget process, do I expect to see on this? And how much do I think that this has already been wrestled with beyond this moment in this night? And thinking about the long list of priorities that I wanted to see have more money, and that that is not really, like, that that would not be a reasonable way for me to try to like leverage the budget process in this moment, given that process information. So thank you for laying that out.
Counselor Labure, then Counselor Cruz.
Thank you, Mayor. And, you know, my perspective on this is that we do try to set out and try to work throughout the year to try to massage and, and understand and, and put out the council's sort of vision for our budget throughout any number of processes. And I think the planning session is just, you know, one of many of those. But the reason for the amendments is when the council feels like, or members of the council feel like it just, the budget isn't meeting the mark in specific areas. And that's the reason why, you know, we're having this discussion. There's a number of ways we can do it, but we might as well have the discussion now in the budgetary cycle. We know that doesn't stop the process or end, but it makes sense to do it here, because, you know, when you come up to planning session, everybody says, well, this needs to be a planning session discussion. And then, you know, in the planning session, it's like, well, this is gonna be part of the budgeting process. So we're trying to figure out, you know, you're always trying to figure out the best way to, you know, work on the issues that you feel like are important in the community. So I think this is one, one way of doing it. And if other people had other amendments, I'd certainly be considering them. And we always have to weigh things relative to the potential bad things that can happen. I mean, again, in this budget, it's got 20-something million dollars worth of reserve asks in it. I mean, one could say, let's not do anything with the reserves, and let's leave those, you know, where they are, and let's finance some of these bigger ticket items, because we're worried about, you know, the economy and where our revenue is going. We're always gonna have to evaluate that. Soon, we might be evaluating Jefferson County School District, might be getting rid of some properties, and we're gonna have to evaluate at that time whether or not, you know, it's appropriate to, to spend resources on, on that type of ask, and whether, what all the financial challenges are, and our sales tax challenges are. So I think we're constantly always having to grapple with that. And, you know, and I think we're gonna have to, you know, that won't end today, and that won't end as a part of this discussion. For me, the reason we have this process where there's multiple hearings and a public hearing is because the other piece of it is the public hasn't really had as much ability to be engaged in this budgeting process as well. And so this is the opportunity for the public to come here and say, hey, you know, what I want didn't, didn't get funded this year. And they might be right, and they might be wrong. That's what we're elected to determine, whether or not they're right or wrong. And we're gonna try to meet their expectations to the best of our ability, and that's, you know, what we're, what I'm doing here with this amendment as well. But we also understand there are serious issues with operational costs. There are insurance, there's reserves, there's the economy, there's the tax revenue issue. We have to grapple with all of those. That's all a part of the job. And you all do a great job of really helping us, set us up for success. That's why we're only talking about probably two amendments. We might have been talking about 20 if the budget, you know, if we thought it was totally outlandish or not going in the right direction. So I think, I want to make that clear, and I don't think I have in the last couple of weeks, but it's because, you know, you're always sort of focused on the goal. But I do think this is a great budget. I think there's a lot of great things in here. I think, man, when I first started on council, the sidewalk budget was like $100,000, you know? We've really moved in a lot of great directions. But that doesn't mean that we should just stop and not push and try to do more, and try to, you know, make the best city we can make. And that's why we're here. And if, and if that's not why we're, you know, if, if we have no role in that process, then I don't know why we're having these meetings. Like, I don't, I don't know why I came. So that's why I'm, you know, I'm gonna push on these things, I'm gonna ask for a little extra money. a little extra money to push for the incentives, I'm going to push to try to get our GHGs down, and this is going to make a very tiny impact on that, even if this money was allocated. But it'll make some, and that's enough for me. And I'm going to keep pushing more all the time. So, let's, I'm happy to just do the vote. I just want to put that out there, that there's never a perfect time to do the right thing, or there's never the perfect time to push. You just keep pushing, and that's how, that's how it works. And so I appreciate all of you sitting here and listening to this. But this is, you know, I think this is a good, useful conversation, whether, whatever outcome it is. I think the council needs to continue to be more engaged in these kind of conversations, so we can all deliver the resources that you all need to be successful. You know, the body, the body cameras, and the body armor, and the cars, and the parks, and the, you know, equipment to mow it. I mean, that's what we're here for. So thanks, appreciate it. Thanks for hearing me opine.
Counsel Cruz, then Counsel Stewart.
Thank you. And yeah, I do just want to start by thanking both Counselors LeBier and Nystrom for sparking this conversation. I mean, I, I think, you know, I did, as a member of the Budget and Audit Board, vote for a, the budget as it is, and that is something that I am standing by with the information that I have right now. And I think that you both have highlighted issues that are really meaningful and really important and core to a lot of the values and a lot of why all of us are here. And I, and I do just want to echo and uplift something in what I just heard from Counsel LeBier, which is that I think I have seen the ways that we are impacting this budget in what is prioritized in this budget, and in the conversations that we're having, and in the multiple presentations that we've gotten that have spoken specifically to the things that we have highlighted for you all, that the community has highlighted for us. And so I do see our values and the constituency's values in this budget. So I do want to thank you all as staff for that. And just emphasize that I appreciate this conversation, I think it's necessary, and that, like, the values are the same, we're just maybe doing different things at different times on this. And so I did have a, maybe a question, because part of what I think I'm hearing, at least from my perspective in both of these amendments, is that we have kind of a runway on some of these projects. We're doing the best with the limited information we have on what that's going to look like to make those projects work. And I think this was true in the biking conversation, and I'm kind of curious if this is an answerable question. Like, we get, we get to next year, like, I don't know, March, whatever. You all have figured, somehow figured out this puzzle of rebates as, you know, the Sustainability and Community Development Department. And the, you know, piece that we have to put in as local share, right, like, is more than what we thought, or whatever, right? Like, I guess I, as a new counselor, just would love to know from y'all's perspective, maybe both Mr. Parker and Ms. Bjorkland, of we've set a priority, we've put money in the budget, we're not at the point where we're talking about the revised budget yet, but you're making program decisions, and they're not exactly what we expected. What does, what does that look like, and how do these conversations impact those decisions that you all are making in the moment, along with maybe any potentially rosier financial projections in those moments than we have now?
Yeah, I mean, I think especially for new programs like this will be, I think a regular back and forth will be helpful, both for council and for staff. So the way that I would see this rolling out is, you know, we're back early in the year, maybe February, March, with, all right, here are our resources for our community members, here are the new programs that we're rolling out. We probably won't have given out a dollar yet at that point, but then we can come back in June or July and say, okay, here's how it's going. We've given out this much, we are definitely going to need more. Or, we've given out this much, maybe we need to refocus, because it's not getting the results we'd want. So that's how I see it rolling out.
And I would agree with Mr. Parker's comments that, and that's what I was alluding to when I was talking about the budget process, is throughout the year, we're collecting lots of information. So making the decisions of how much is being put in the budget is much more helpful to do during the budget process, during the revised, and the, so we're doing the revised 20 and 24, and there's several items in there today that were revised based on feedback from council throughout the year, or based on feedback from the community throughout the year. So it's very helpful for us to have those touchpoints. It's making the decision of how much to change in the budget is more helpful to do it this time, if that makes sense.
Yeah. So just to check my understanding, if, you know, if we're moving forward, you all are continuing to have these conversations, we're all checking in, like, the amount that we have now with the best information that we have, if, again, it changes at some period of time, that's not like some kind of hard stop that your department is going to run into for a program like we clearly have some level of buy-in on? Is that sort of accurate? Okay, thank you.
Counsel Stewart.
I really appreciate those questions. Counselor Cruz, I had a couple of similar ones myself, so thank you for asking those. I, you know, I assume we're going to take another test consensus vote, and I, as the Chair of the Budget and Audit Board, just, I continue to stand by the budget as it has been made, and I'm really proud to have a budget that even has a rebate program in it this year for the very first time, because we said in January that this was a priority. I'm also very happy on this particular item to continue having these conversations, because it is critical, and I would imagine that we're probably going to have more demand on this program than we anticipate. I anticipate that. But to Counselor Mayat Guerrero's point as well, we have more demand on housing and homeless navigation services than we can fund as well. So, given the fact that, you know, I think that these are really important conversations to have, I'm very deeply appreciative that we're having them, because I think it just, quite frankly, again, shows where the council's priorities are, and that, quite frankly, we're all on the same page, really what we're having are process questions. And I think that's great. So tonight, I'm going to be a no on this, but I'm happy to keep having the conversation on this one. And if putting it in a supplemental appropriation or a revised budget is a more appropriate choice, since, quite frankly, we have budgeted dollars in the, in the budget that we frankly don't even have a program yet for, which I think is, you know, a testament to the fact that this is a huge priority, that we would even almost put the cart before the horse a little bit on this one, is my only kind of hesitation with kind of doubling the size of this budget in a pilot year. That's, you know, speaking to how I'm, how I'm going to plan to push my button tonight, but happy to keep having this conversation, because this is a, this is an important one.
All right. Thank you, Counsel Stewart. And seeing no more hands up, I'll go ahead. And I do want to stand behind the budget that the Budget and Audit Board did approve tonight, but also I'm very excited about the, just being discussed, ongoing, regular updates that will allow us to keep a better pulse on not only what kind of programs and grants that we are receiving within this space, but also to be more nimble and understanding what kind of community interest there is, and whether we very quickly run out of money. I mean, one of the things that, you know, someone pointed out earlier in my question about tree canopy, we get through that money for the tree canopy every year. We also have a program that sells 400 trees to some of our Lakewood residents, and that sells out within minutes. So there is a very high possibility that any program that we do put in place maybe go quickly. And I, we've got some good guardrails in place, I would say, for us to keep tabs on that, and we'll work towards making sure that we are addressing what the community needs as we move forward. So for tonight, I would be a no for now, but I'm interested in continuing to have this conversation. And with that, we'll go ahead and open up, again, an informal indication of interest vote. So as the amendment was discussed this evening, if you would be interested in passing that when we come back together on the 21st, the answer, or the vote would be yes, and if All right, and that fails with three yeses, seven noes, the noes being Strom, Mayat Guerrero, Stewart, Ryan Charazai, Lo, and Cruz. Okay. Thank you, everybody. And before we move on to our next topic, as the mayor of this, I'm sorry, what?
So I think we just need a vote then to continue the discussion on to, on to second reading.
Oh, on, okay, so original motion. Perfect. We can do that. I'm going to go ahead with my comments first, and then what we're doing is we're following up with the vote on the first reading of the ordinance, which will, again, clarification on process for those that are chiming in that aren't used to following this conversation. What the first reading vote of tonight is that we are making is to publish this. We would be actually discussing passing the budget in our upcoming meeting. Tonight's vote is just to publish it. So before I go on, I wanted to say that, you know, as the mayor of the city, and again, a financial person, like, I will be honest, I totally nerd out on this lovely little piece of lots of pages. And I know it's not very green, because it's lots of trees too, but there is so much that is going on in here, and the, the level of dedication that you all have to putting together this budget that so, in many ways, is challenging to thread the needle of meeting the needs of over 156,000 residents and businesses nicely included in this budget, is that we have over 47 million square feet of office, commercial, and retail. That's a lot of businesses that really, the decisions that we make impact them as well. And you can see that driving up and down Alameda and Colfax very clearly. And the fact that, you know, I mentioned earlier, the conservative approach that you guys take to planning, but also the pay-as-you-go, looking more at preventative and what kind of maintenance we can do ahead of time to start to save money, and the level of investment that we've been making across this community with cash and avoiding debt, avoiding bonds, we're not 100% bond-free, debt-free, I should say, but man, we are so close. And it is absolutely amazing to me that we are able to function in this way, and to be able to add over $24 million that was directly aimed at the goals that have come out of council's retreat that occurred earlier this year. Like, that is not insignificant. So to hear, you know, all, and finally, in this, this third year, like, I feel like the budget is starting to feel a little bit like what we created through the last three years of conversations. As we, you know, mentioned tonight, we've now got bike lanes in there, we've got sustainability spending in there, we've got a lot that's going, going, going already towards homelessness, but also having conversations and being able to move the dial on affordability and attainability of housing across our community. So I just wanted to say a big, huge thank you to everybody that participated in this process, from staff, our department heads, city council, it all started there. We have our Budget Audit Board that includes resident members, and all of our residents that even show up in ward meetings throughout the year, and/or that responded to our surveys that went out earlier this spring. This is very much a community-minded, community-built budget, and I really appreciate all of the input that you all took from us as you put these very intricate numbers together. So I will stop. I don't know if I went over five minutes, I didn't get the bell, but I thank you. Oh, nice. Revenue is not always my strong suit. But thank you, everybody up here, down there, all across Lakewood, for chiming in to the extent that all of you have throughout this process. And with that, then, I will go ahead and move us forward to the vote for our first reading, which, again, a vote yes is to publish it, and us coming back on the 21st for a continuation of this discussion, to pass this by November 1st, as we are required by charter. All right. Let the voting begin. All right, and that passes nine yeses, one no, the no being Counselor Olver. Okay. Moving on, will the clerk please read item number six into the record?
Item six, Resolution 2024-54. A resolution urging the registered electors of the City of Lakewood to vote in favor of Lakewood ballot issue 2A at the November 5th, 2024 state general election. A ballot issue for the purpose of authorizing a voter-approved revenue change for the City of Lakewood.
Thank you. And with that, there are also five comments on this topic on LakewoodSpeaks.org. I don't have anybody signed up to speak on this. We have one left, and she is going to join us up front for comments on this measure. Did you, can we get you on your, on your way out, if you can sign up? Yep, thank you. So name an ward or name an address, and you get three minutes.
Sure. My name is Wendy Schrader, I live in Ward Four. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city staff that's still here, thank you for the time to speak. In speaking to you on Resolution 2024-54, urging the registered voters of the City of Lakewood, I was a bit aghast that the city was taking an official stance on something that, number one, they spent city dollars to help draft. Then, and there's been numerous comments about that online, in person, and so forth. And so I looked up and down the municipal code. Interestingly enough, there is a little tidbit written in there by the letter of the law that allows you to do this. I really wish there wasn't. However, I think it's unethical to use my tax dollars for you to tell me how to vote. And so I'm here to share with you a little bit tonight. In doing a little bit of research on this particular item, I came across not only the city's position over and over again, but I came across a piece that was written by Councilmember Olver. I have barely met him twice in Ward Four meetings, but I thought I would take the opportunity to read what he wrote, because apparently you didn't give him the opportunity to publish that in Looking at Lakewood. From Councilmember Rich Olver, "The city council recently voted 9 to 1 to place a Tabor termination question on our November ballot. If passed, Lakewood will no longer be subject to Tabor restrictions, ending Tabor refunds permanently." I was the sole dissenting vote, again, written by Councilmember Olver. "I believe this qualifies as shenanigans," I would agree with him, "because voters might not fully understand the implications. The ballot claims, quote, 'without increasing taxes or adding new tax law,' which is technically true. However, the Tabor rebate will disappear forever, all at that. If you lose a rebate or pay more fees and end up paying more, haven't your taxes effectively increased? When is a tax increase not a tax increase? Never." The ballot also states that funds will be earmarked for police, parks, public works. While this is accurate, Lakewood has a Tabor fund which contained $30 million at the end of 2022. These departments already consumed nearly 80% of the city's budget in 2022. They spent $220 million out of a $287 million budget. The reality is, your rebate money will go into the Tabor fund bucket, which will free up funds in the general fund bucket, potentially diverting money to other projects. Council's primary priorities have been homeless and government-subsidized housing, often termed affordable housing. This is where the money will actually go. This is not a secret, this is what the vast majority of counselors favor. If you're willing to give up your Tabor rights to the refund, to these initiatives, then that's your choice, but you should be fully informed about what you're voting for. So not only am I upset you're spending my dollars, but you couldn't even balance the information that you did make available to the taxpayers. And for that, I say shame on you."
Thank you. All right, let's go ahead. We'll start with a motion, and then we'll open up to council comments and questions.
Mayor, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2024-54.
Second. Okay, do we have any council? Okay, do we have any council comments or questions? Councillor Over.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to read that, but thank you for doing that. If you watched the VP debate last week, you probably heard Senator J.D. Vance say that Trump peacefully left office or handed over power. While that's technically true, because he was not dragged kicking and screaming out of the White House, it's technically true, but at the same time, it's far from the truth. The January 6 riot in the Capitol proves the lie inside that which is the truth, that which is technically true. This ballot measure takes a page from the Trump playbook. A lot of it is technically true, but look a little closer, and it's a pack of lies. So let's look at it. I have, it came in the mail today. So the first four words say, "without increasing current taxes." Technically true, but if your taxes go up, which is, nobody up here is going to deny that people will be paying more taxes. So is it a tax increase? Technically, it's not, but you're going to be paying more taxes, so, you know, think about that. The next part that I really hate the most is it says where the revenue will be spent. And it says, "Revenue will be spent as follows. It's going to go to parks, police, and public works," three places. That is true, technically true, but the money's not going to go there. And I'll have to use my little buckets here to explain that. All right, think of this as a, can we see that? Maybe if I held it up here. I can see, you can't quite see that. Well, I can't hold it, so I have to put it up here. All right, think of that as the general fund bucket, and this is the Tabor fund bucket. And think of this as the money, your tax money, and so a little bit of it is going to go into the Tabor fund if you approve this 2A in November. A little bit of money goes into the Tabor fund. A lot of your tax money goes into the general fund. And so then, what happens after that? Suppose the city wants, say, a dump truck. They could pull it, the money, out of the general, or out of the Tabor fund and pay for it that way, or they could pull, let's say they wanted a police car. I need longer arms. Ah ha. Okay, so they could pull a police car out of the Tabor fund, so technically, it's true. They are using the Tabor fund to pay for police and public works and parks. But what's left in the general fund? Oh, let's look at that. A whole bunch of money. And so they can use that for anything they want. And so what are they going to use it for? They're going to use it for the council priorities. You heard them all here tonight. They're going to use it to fund homeless shelters, they're going to use it for affordable housing, which I call government-subsidized housing. And I'm going to go down a little aside right now, because also in the vice presidential debate last week, Governor Tim Walz mentioned something about natural affordable housing. And I'd never heard that term before. I think it's more like organic affordable housing. And I'm trying to figure out what that is. I haven't really chased it down or heard about it too much, but I would think it's something like lowering realtor fees, lowering insurance, lowering energy costs somehow. And I'm not sure. But thoughts, like, I've never heard anything like that here in the last three years. So basically, the money is going to go into homeless and affordable housing. So like I said before, in the piece that wasn't published in the Looking at Lakewood, if you want to pay more taxes to support the homeless and pay for affordable housing or subsidized housing, government-subsidized housing, then you should vote for this ballot measure. It doesn't matter to me. But you should know actually what's going on, because it's technically true, but in actuality, not so very much. And as an example of how to do it correctly, Denver has a ballot measure this November where they're asking their voters to raise the sales tax by half a cent, and it's for affordable housing. So they're asking them to do that. They're telling the truth. Here in Lakewood, we're being very deceitful and using language, I mean, it reminds me of some of the Republican measures that we've seen in the past where you have to vote no to be yes, or you have to vote yes to be no. And it's confusing, and it could have been a lot better, and I wish we would do it better. Thank you.
All right, we have no more hands up this evening. So with that, we'll go ahead and move forward, and a yes vote would be passing the resolution to endorse, and a no vote would be not. And that passes nine yeses, one nay, the nay being councillor Over. One more item before us this evening. And I want to make a quick explanation on this. So this was a special meeting dedicated to budgetary items this evening in order to make sure that we get the budget passed by our charter-required date of November 1st. We did have a citizen petition that came in in the time that needed to be brought forward to city council for presentation with a very strict clock based on how our code works and the law. So what we were able to do, because we have this meeting this evening, is to work this into this evening's meeting without needing to call a special session. So with that, I've invited the city clerk, Mr. Rob, to go ahead and give his report of initial sufficiency for the citizens' initiative that has been presented to city council. We will hear more about this as we move forward. I think, what is it, in two weeks or three weeks, we get the final report?
Yes.
But just starting tonight, and there will be no discussion about this, we're just hearing an update from the clerk, and then we'll get more information.
Twenty first.
On the 21st will be the next.
Thank you, Mayor. That was such a good introduction. I could probably just skip the first slide, but, you know, tonight is kind of the public presentation from the report you all received from me today. To summarize the initial sufficiency of the citizens' initiative that we received, provide the numbers to determine what initial sufficiency means to the council, give a timeline for next steps by staff and for the council, and discuss potential election costs for the 2024 and 2025 election budgets. This is just a simple reminder that the rights for a citizens' initiative at the state and local level are protected by the state constitution and implemented according to our Home Rule Charter, the municipal code, and state law where some of our provisions are silent. This is a busy slide, but it's just a brief summary of the city's citizens' initiative process. And Lakewood residents can circulate an approved petition for up to 180 days to gather 5,862 valid signatures. The required number of signatures come from the calculating 5% of 117,237 registered voters, and that number is drawn from the previous city council election. And, you know, every initiative process has some sort of threshold similar to this calculation. Sorry about that. Just to review the timeline of this petition process, on September 20th, the city clerk's office accepted 115 petitions from Save Open Space Lakewood, which totaled 8,328 signatures. Tonight is the initial sufficiency determination. To update the council and the public, that 6,456 signatures were accepted as valid, which is nearly 600 over the required amount. So for the record, my initial determination is that there are a sufficient number of valid signatures to move forward with the citizens' initiative process. And as Kathy mentioned, on October 21st, I'll present the final sufficiency determination to the council if there are no protests filed or if no protests are handled efficiently. And here is another look at the presentation timeline. Again, if we receive any protests, they could alter this timeline if they are not resolved quickly. And if the timeline stays on course, the council will see a first reading ordinance to codify the petition changes at the October 21st meeting as well, so that both options will be presented for action at the first meeting in November to allow the council to either adopt code change, adopt the code change in the petition, or call a special election for the Lakewood voters to consider the code change. And again, that's the break in the road here, where any time after October 22nd, council will be considering these two items. Since it's budget season, I wanted to convey how the annual election budget typically works and show the election costs that we are already expecting in 2024 and could expect from a citywide special election. The city clerk's office annual budget allot's 130,000 each year for election costs. As you all know, in January 2024, we had a special election for Ward Five, which carried a cost of approximately 61,000. And we will also have to incur the 2024 Tabor question for ballot issue 2A. And if you all remember that contract, the cost will be determined after the election. And the nearest estimates we could draw from were the 2023 November council election, which cost approximately 106,000. And then we also pulled the number from the marijuana initiative question 2B in 2020, which cost nearly 120,000. We also incurred some early petition costs for our favorite local election consultant, Karen Goldman. We did reach out to her on some consulting through this process. We were worried we were getting behind pace, and so we also reached out and hired some election judges from the county that we also, that we used from the special election in January, as well as some temp employees to assist with petition signature review. So that has already incurred a cost between 2,000 to 3,000 for the petition process. And then, of course, we wanted to highlight the opportunity costs for significant staff time that we have already been spent on the petition process all the way from March to So given the election costs incurred in 2024, the 2024 election budget will already need to be supplemented from the general fund to cover election costs. And this could also include some expenses for the special election for the initiative if we incur costs this year, since the initiative cannot make it on to the November general Again, the 2025 budget also allot's 130,000 for election costs. If sent to the voters, this initiative will require a special election by January 14th, which carries the following estimated cost, depending on how it is handled. If we receive assistance from the county, we could spend upwards to 175,000. And then, similar to the special election we had this November, excuse me, this January, we did not have the county's assistance, and we got that number of 350,000 by taking the cost of this special election times five. So these are big scary numbers. They are not conservative, but we just wanted to give council an idea and a range of what these costs could look like. And of course, the opportunity costs of significant staff time is mentioned here as well. Plus, the November 2025 council election will also incur a cost to the election budget in 2025. So if the council calls a state, excuse me, a citywide special election in January 2025, again, the 2025 election budget will need to be supplemented from the general fund. And I got through all of these slides and didn't even mention, or I forgot to mention in the bullets, that we could still have a potential vacancy election for Ward Three, which could add additional costs to the 2024 or 2025 election budgets. So I just want to give a big thank you to the city clerk staff who did work diligently and under a lot of pressure to process a large amount of signatures and petitions that we've received in kind of in this, it's a 20-day deadline, you have to turn it around. And then, of course, the other departments were extremely helpful in helping us navigate this process. And with that, I will open up to any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rob. Do we have any questions? I have one question. It might be for Mr. Van Lanschou more than it might be the city clerk, I'm not sure. You had mentioned, one of the pages had the image of the petition to protest. If one of those were to come in, and I want to make clear my understanding, so the only real grounds for a valid petition to protest would be valid signatures. Is that correct?
I would love to answer that question. I haven't specifically worked on this issue, so I would need some time to actually get into that and provide a sufficient answer for it.
Okay, I appreciate that. I can get with the city attorney when she is available later this week.
Or I can speak to, you know, if the pass is prologue, you know, I know that the Smart Growth Initiative was challenged based on the oath, the oath that the circulators signed or the oath language that the petition representatives submitted. So I think there could be a number of ways that someone could protest the process, the paperwork, or the petitions themselves.
And I can make a note of the question. We can have that conversation on the 21st.
Okay, that sounds perfect. All right, well, at this time, we still have no comments, so there being no further business this evening coming before the city council, I will go ahead and adjourn this special meeting at 10:03 PM.